February 23 to order. And Paul, can you read your thing?
Sure. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the February 23rd, 2021 public meeting for the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Committee television. Two, real time public comment can be addressed to the meeting, to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Instructions and the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. www.falmouthma.gov backslash planning. Please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access this meeting. Three, additional public comments may be sent in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may be submitted via email. Many email comments and documents will be made a part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the chair. Four, applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department to arrange an alternative means of real time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and their visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you. And now we have the minutes of February 9th and February 13th. Paul?
I recommend approval of the minutes of February 9th, 2021, as corrected.
May I have a second on that? Charlotte, you're on mute. You just wanted to second it.
I have not received the draft minutes of February 13th, which is the joint meeting with the planning board and the select board. So I defer that.
Okay, so we, but first let's vote on the February 9th. It's been moved and seconded. Show by raising your hand whether you accept, please. Okay, seven out of seven. And February 13th, Paul, would you make a motion then to?
I'll make a motion. We defer the minutes of the joint meeting, February 13th, 2021, to receive the draft minutes.
And is there a second on that, Charlotte? Okay, thank you. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. I'll seven out of seven. Okay, we have had a request that we take the, yeah, public discussion of the EDIC on the bus station on Depot Avenue and the surrounding property out of order because they're going to be about 10 minutes in their presentation and they're at the end of all of this discussion. May I have such a motion if you're okay with that, Jim?
I move we take the EDIC's discussion out of order and put them first to move through this many faster.
Okay, may I have a second? Okay, Bob is seconded. Give me a show of hands, all in favor, please. Okay, so seven out of seven. We will move them out of order and Tom and whomever else has to get involved in this to elevate them for the presentation.
That would be Justin, who is our DJ tonight. He also our DJ from Saturday. We are sending texts behind the screen here to let folks know that, who to elevate. And we have just brought Mike DeGioano and Mike also.
Thank you.
Even with my bad spelling on my phone, we got him into the room.
I knew you had to have something to do with it, but I knew it was Justin who had. Okay. Who's doing the presentation? Which of the mics are you both? Okay, Mike Glasso, and you've got to take yourself off mute, Michael.
Okay. Thank you. I'll start and then Mike DeGioano will follow. So I want to thank you, Tom, Pat, Melinda, for getting us on your agenda so quickly. We'll take 10 minutes or less to give you first a little background on the EDIC and how we might be able to help the planning board achieve some of your goals and objectives and to also ask your help this evening for a new planning project that we're undertaking. So Paul and Jim are familiar with the EDIC. They've been to a number of our meetings. Jim's a former member, but I just want to give a quick background so everyone's familiar. First of all, we're a nonprofit organization. We're not a town committee. Our relationship with the town is that the selectmen get to appoint our board, but we're a private, public, nonprofit organization. We have our own funds. We do our own projects. And as I said, the selectmen select our members who serve in three year consecutive terms up to nine years. So we were formed originally to develop the tech park. We were formed by the, by town meeting. We developed the tech park on Thomas Landers Road. We also on Raymond Street. We lent money to small businesses through our partnership with Coastal Community Bank. And through the help of Paul and Jim, we redeveloped the bus station. We did that by negotiating a long term ground lease with, with Mass DOT. Jim can tell you how long we paid, how much we paid for that 99 year ground lease. He negotiated that for us. And we also, two hands would be $10 for 99 years. And we also acquired with that station, the surrounding two acres, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. We obtained a grant from Mass DOT for 1.6 million. As you know, we renovated the station. The other project that we did most recently, again, Jim participated in this, was at the solar at the landfill. It's interesting you have a solar project on your agenda tonight. So that was a project where the EDIC did a study. We didn't really know a lot about solar. We learned a lot through it. We learned how much energy the town is using, how much they're paying for it. So we issued an RFP and with our developers, Citizens Energy, we developed a landfill which was costing the town 100,000 a year to operate. It was closed and we now have turned that into a revenue stream of over $750,000 a year to the town. And Jim could probably calculate your eternal return on that investment. The town has $0 invested. We pay them a ground lease. They get all the energy. The total benefits to the town is about 750 to 850,000 dollars a year. We're just.
Mike, that's an infinite return.
Yes. And we're just starting phase two, again, with Citizens Energy. The important component about phase two is that 250 low and moderate income households in Falmouth will be able to save on their energy through the phase two project of the solar at the landfill. So it's really a project that benefits the whole community, obviously very strongly the town and the town's budget, but also 250 low income residents of the town. That's through what's called a community solar project. And we recently funded a study to extend high speed internet access townwide and we put up $50,000 for that. So how can we help you, the planning board, achieve some of your goals? So some of the things that we can do without having to go to town meeting because we have our own funds is assistant funding studies that you may want to do. We can, you can put in a request to us. We hear at our meeting, we decide whether or not we can fund it. And if we can't, we try to find other sources. We're able to acquire property. We're able to issue revenue bonds. Now, these are special revenue bonds. They're not town obligation revenue bonds. They're revenue bonds that are paid off by the projects that we, that are done. So we're issuing of revenue bonds that are not an obligation of the town. So that can be very helpful in redeveloping some large properties. Obviously, we have the power of eminent domain. We tried to use that on Liberty Square. Didn't work that time, but it's a power that the EDIC does have. So, you know, we can act as a developer. We can issue RFPs to select contractors. We can manage development project. We can finance development projects. We can develop workforce and affordable housing. So, you know, we can do a lot of things and help move things along quicker with just a request to us. You have an idea of some of the things that we could do. If you'd like to put some of our members on some of your committees to work with you and then come forward with a request. If there's a piece of property that you feel is very important to a future development or a future plan that you're working on, that's something that we could help acquire. We helped acquire 740 Main Street, which is the great affordable housing project right on Main Street. So there's a lot of things that, that we could do to help you achieve some of your goals. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike DeGioano. He's our executive director. He can talk a little bit about what we're planning on doing at the bus station property and how we'd like to have your help.
Michael?
Thank you, Michael. And thanks to planning board for taking us out of order here. I just want to point out that we have Chris Simler also here. Chris is also on the board of the EDIC. He's the vice chair. And I think in the waiting room, I don't know if we can get him on here, is Tom Ferrante, who is also with the EDIC. I don't know if Justin, if you could admit Tom or if the chair has to permit that, but Tom Ferrante from the EDIC is also sort of in the, in the bullpen. And there, and there he is. One project, real quick, that Michael didn't mention, but because Michaela's on the phone, excuse me, on the, in the meeting, I want to mention another partnership that we had with the town. The town became eligible to apply for CDBG block grant funding. The EDIC volunteered to do the grant writing and we were successful in getting $160,000 for micro enterprise grants for small businesses in Falmouth. And that program should be launching. We'll have the portal on our website this week, but we won't be advertising really until next week, but those will be grants up to $10,000 for low and moderate business owners in Falmouth that have lost money because of COVID-19. And Michaela is working closely with us on that. So I just wanted to mention that. In terms of the planning grant that Michael spoke of, we sent some plans, concept plans along to the planning board. These were just different plans for Falmouth Station that has been done over the, the last few years. And, and I don't know, Tom, Bob, if you put those up on the screen or we're supposed to, it really doesn't matter. We're, we're not here to get into the deep dive of the plans. Mostly what we're here to, to tell you about is we did get a $50,000 planning assistance grant from Mass Development and in this program to do a master plan of Falmouth Station. And in this program, Mass Development hires the engineers and the architects to come work with the ID, EDIC, and also to meet with the different stakeholders in the community and boards and commissions. And we'll certainly be coming back to the planning board when we get underway with Mass Development and its consultants. And some of the things we're looking at as part of that study would be to improve bus capacity and safety at the station so that there's a shot of kind of the existing conditions at Falmouth Station. Here's a shot of some of the alternate parking layouts. If we, if we feel like expanding parking at Falmouth Station is important, why would we want to do that? Well, parking is getting tight. We do have interest from other intercity bus carriers at the station. We may want to realign some of the, the way the buses come into the station to get more separation between the parking and the crosswalks into the station and the loading onto the buses. We want to take a look at that. We want to take a look at improved connection to the Shining Sea bike path. We want to take a look at maybe providing more services to the bikers and the walkers that use the Shining Sea bike path. We've been asked by the transportation committee to look at improved signage as part of what was the master plan that was done, the transportation master plan that was done a few years back for Falmouth. Another concept that's been talked about at the station would be the idea to introduce maybe some workforce housing on some of the surplus property of the station. And there's an earlier plan that was done, which located a building on some of the surplus land there. As I said, these are all just concepts. Nothing's been adopted. Nothing's been vetted, but our plan would be to take these concepts out, but also to meet with different groups, come back to the planning board with our consultants, meet with the planning staff and get their input as to what should happen in and around planning station. As I said, we're doing some of the scoping now with the consultants. We're hoping to get that planning effort underway in the next few weeks. And so we'll certainly be circling back with you and many other committees in Falmouth because Falmouth Station is a busy place. Prior to the COVID, we had probably 90 arrivals and departures there during the summer between Peter Pan, Cape Cod Regional Transit, and other transportation services. And, you know, we feel that will come back and we have interest from other intercity bus carriers as well. So I think with that, I'll once again thank the planning board for their time and I think we'll take any questions. Chris or Tom, I don't know if you want to add anything to any of that. Chris and Tom are sort of overseeing, they're the EDIC board members. They're on the subcommittee that's sort of overseeing this effort with staff in Mass Development.
I just want to say thank you for allowing us to present and in sharing our thoughts. We want to partner with as many agencies and committees as we can. So we thank you for, for this opportunity.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions up from the board? Yes, Paul?
Yeah, I have one basic question, Mike. I don't recall the lease, but I think the lease limits the development here to translated transportation related activities. Does the housing in there come under that umbrella?
So you're correct. Well, so Michael, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, that, that's true. But you know, transit oriented development, which includes housing, is very high, I know, on the governor's list and also on, on Mass DOT. They are currently looking at all their locations to increase the amount of housing that can be built in close proximity to transit stations. So I think this falls right in with that, with that concept and policy that they've adapted over the years.
Yes.
We do require, you know, their approval. They are part of the team on, on planning the site. And you know how difficult it is to work with them, get them to do anything, Jim and I and Dave Eldridge took numerous trips up to Boston to meet with them. So we've started those discussions early, make sure that they're fully involved. Michael, do you have anything like to add to that?
Nope, I think that doesn't.
Okay, I have one question also because I believe there is a wetlands of some sort there, whether it's always there or ephemeral. Is that correct or not? And would you have to work around it or what?
We would certainly identify if that were the case. I think what people are looking at is, if I'm not mistaken, when the, prior to the, when the estates were up behind there, I think that was actually a carriage road. So that depression that everybody's looking at is actually a carriage road that goes under the rail right away. It sort of looks like a wetland depression, but, and, and we'll certainly take that into account, but I, I'm not sure it is. I think it's just that old carriage road that goes under the rail right away.
Well, Mike, I think. That's why I asked the question as I did.
Yep. Yeah, Paul Dryer is the expert on this and did a lot of research and went back. And that's how they, they used to move cattle so they wouldn't cross the railroad tracks. So Paul, if you want to expand upon it, but you know, you enlightened us all about the purpose of that area.
Yes, Paul?
Actually, there are several areas where cattle crossings go under the railroad. In this particular case, my understanding is that the BB family did not want to wait for the train. It was for their carriages to go up the hill that can go under the tracks, would not have to wait on the way up. So it was more of a aspect like that.
Okay.
Up as well. These can actually be very, very different. And I know you're working on it, but one doesn't show any way to get from the lower area on the way up. The other one seems to show an area, but doesn't show the building. So I think there's a lot of uncertainty about what's being proposed here from my mind.
Right. And as I said, these are just concepts that were done over different time periods. So, so they are not in sync with each other. And that, that, that's really the purpose of the, the next phase of the planning.
Okay, great. And Jim, you have something and then we must move on.
I know. I just want to point out, I have, I've looked at the GIS map for the town regulatory maps. There's no sensitive areas near this place at all. I have the advantage of two screens that can look it up when you're talking about it. And I'm looking at the regulatory map and there's nothing there.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you all for presenting this to us.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you for moving us. We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. There's another project. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Now, I do need a motion to move back to our normal agenda. May I have that?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second and to move back. Show your hands, please. Okay, there are currently six of us here, so six out of six. So we move back to the public hearing and this is on the spring 2021 town meeting articles. And I will remind all of you that we're listening. If you have a question of clarification, it's going to be very difficult to clarify something from a letter, but those are allowed. Any discussion is not allowed in this listening on these articles. And I would ask all of you to please put yourselves on mute so that we're not making noises when other things are going on. So, thank you very much. Paul, could you, oh no, you need to. Okay. The first one is article 21. Paul, the notices, please.
Yeah. These articles were published on February 5th, 2021 and February 12th, 2021, all five of them.
Okay, February 5th, 2021, all five. So that's notice for all five of these articles that we're discussing tonight. The first one is article 21. To see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw article 48 as follows. One, to section 240 dash 254B, add sub paragraph four to read, "The planning board may allow reduced setbacks where the lot abuts or is separated by a street from permanently conserved open space or land in common ownership or control of the applicant. Within any no disturb zone, the planning board may allow landscaping and other screening." Two, revise section 240 dash 254D1 to read, "Not more than two acres or 20% of the lot, whichever is greater, shall be deforested for any one ground mounted solar photovoltaic, excuse me, installation, and no such installation shall be placed on such land that was deforested within the prior five years. For any deforestation allowed in excess of two acres, the planning board may require mitigation, such as the permanent conservation of open space on or off site of up to an area equal to such excess, which may include reforestation." Three, revise section 240 dash 254D2 to read, "Land clearing in excess of 20% of the lot in connection with any single installation is prohibited." Article 29, Earth Moving Regulations, shall not be applicable to large scale ground mounted solar installations or do or take any other action on this matter on behalf of Conrad Hugan." Now, we've had, by my count, 17 negative letters in regard to this and three positive in regard to this. And what we intend to do is read some of these letters and summarize some of the letters. So. Oh, hi, Bob. Didn't see you there. Didn't know you were elevated. And I think we probably have other people who will be elevated as well. Evan Turner. Okay. What we will do is to have a presentation from the applicant first, and then we will go to the letters. And so who is going to present for the applicant, please?
I'll begin a presentation, Pat, if I may.
Of course, Bob.
Thank you. For your record, I'm Bob Amment. I'm a Falmouth attorney. My firm, Amment Klauer, which includes Matt Terry, who is also on the panel here, represents Amp Energy, which is a global provider, a developer of green, clean energy systems. And their representative is Evan Turner, who's also with us tonight. And Evan's company is Terry's Power and he helps to develop solar arrays such as is being proposed. The first article, article 21, concerns some proposed changes to the town's solar overlay district bylaw that we recommend in connection with a proposed use of the properties. That's the subject of the next article. And a discussion of those properties and how those changes, why they're proposed, will be really fundamental in understanding the rationale, the benefit of these changes. And although they particularly relate to the proposed project at the Cape Cod Country Club, which is the subject of that next article, they would be beneficial in any large solar array. So again, in order to best understand those, I think it would be appropriate to share the screen and Evan can do that and, and show the properties we're concerned about. But Madam Chairman, I wonder whether you want to read in the notice of the, of article 22 so that the discussion, which I think necessarily goes between the two articles, might better proceed. Here, you're muted, Pat.
Okay. I wondered if you would want to do that because I assume that the presentation might be together and I, okay. So article 22 reads to amend. Let's see, article 22, "To amend, will vote to amend the official zoning map of the town of Falmouth to include the following parcels in the large scale ground mounted solar overlay district." One, or it's an I, I'm sorry, a lowercase i, Assessor's Parcel 10 03001163, known as 41 Theater Drive and containing approximately 45.06 acres. known as 41 Theater Drive, and containing approximately 45.06 acres. Lowercase i, two. Assessor's Parcel 10-04007035, known as Zero Boxberry Hill Road, and containing approximately 41.49 acres. Three, Assessor's Parcel 1701028039, known as 48 Theater Drive, and containing approximately 48.65 acres. Four, Assessor's Parcel 1701028A015, known as 59 Theater Drive, and containing approximately 3.39 acres. Five, that portion of the private way known as Theater Drive, which lies to the north and northwest of the westerly property line of Assessor's Parcel 170102813420 Theater Drive, including, without limitation, the cul-de-sac and all parking areas within the bounds of Theater Drive described herein. Six, Assessor's Parcel 10-03001A161, known as 290 Boxberry Hill Road, and containing approximately 1.56 acres. Seven, Assessor's Parcel 10-03001162, known as Zero Boxberry Hill Road, and containing 1.08 acres. And eight, Assessor's Parcel 10-03001160, known as Zero Boxberry Hill Road, and containing approximately 0.68 acres. Or do or take any other action on this matter on behalf of Conrad Hugan.
Thank you, Pat. I'd like to point out that Conrad Hugan and other signatories for the petition are abutters or neighbors of the properties that are proposed to be rezoned. I would suggest, Evan, if you could put on the screen the map that shows the the parcels involved.
Let me see. Does everyone have the slide with the picture and the overlay district letter wording on their screens now?
So the properties in question are owned by the the Freel family or companies of the Freel family and have been for many, many decades the site of the Cape Cod Country Club. A portion of the property is business-owned, about seven and a half acres of business-owned because there used to be the Falmouth Playhouse. In the area that you can see on the plan is a large parking area. That's part of the cul-de-sac of Theater Drive. The Freel family has decided that they need to sell this property. They have spent a considerable amount of time in the last couple of years considering potential redevelopment of the golf course properties, in particular residential development. And we're introduced to the idea of using this property for ground-mounted solar arrays, and that's what we're trying to to help them do. I know that there is, as Pat mentioned, a number of letters that raise objections or concerns about the proposal. I'd like to point out that Evan Turner has worked extremely closely for about six months now with the Kuna Messe Pond Association, which is the neighborhood association with some 128 members, with three town meetings and other discussions with their board of directors. And I believe that that group knows more about this proposal, has more of an interest in the future of the the country club property than others. And I'd like you to very much take into consideration the letter that they have sent, which supports both of the articles that are before you. I also hope that after tonight's hearing or at the end of it, you'll leave the record open for more written comment because I think there are more people who would like to weigh in on this and get your consideration. This is really about two things. It's the future of this substantial property, some 140 acres. Of course, it's about that, and that's hugely important. But it's also about a huge contribution towards Falmouth's efforts to reduce carbon emissions and strive for the net zero that town meeting has proposed. Evan is going to discuss some of the benefits of why this site is is so good for solar. I don't think there is anybody who has written to the board who said this would be a great site for a lot of housing that is the alternative use. And the benefits of the solar are really pretty obvious. It's quiet, doesn't create traffic, doesn't pollute, will cause whatever chemicals come off the golf course into Kuna Messe Pond to to cease. There are very few abutters to this site, which is pretty remarkable for 140-acre piece of property. Rather, most of the property is abutted by substantial expanse of town conservation property. And so given that the use of this property is most likely going to change, we think this is a terrific use. I'd like to be able to discuss in specific a couple of the proposed changes to the the bylaw. But I'm going to let Evan talk first, and then I'd like an opportunity to cover a couple of points. And I appreciate the board's careful listening to what we're trying to say. So Evan, why don't you make a presentation and then get back to me?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm going to walk us through how we see the properties and the benefits and prices and costs and challenges to those benefits for both the base bylaw with no adjustments, as well as the adjustments as we have proposed, and some of the guardrails and consequences thereof that we think are overall quite quite positive. So we have three cases here, red, purple, blue, which is no to either, yes, just the overlay district, and yes, ultimately through town meeting vote to both. As Bob mentioned, and something I know that David wanted to include in the letter that he was going to send you guys, which I believe you've received. He told me he sent it in today, was that they were in the middle of looking at housing for this entire campus as we got put in touch with them. And they ultimately decided that solar would be a much more appropriate fit of the land and the level of an intensity of development that they were, you know, preferred rather than large-scale housing as the regulations of all sorts allow. So in the event that we just can't move forward, you know, we may, you know, try again at some point in the future. But I very much expect that the owners would take the property back, proceed with the original Plan A, now Plan B, and look for large-scale housing. So I guess my emphasis there in general to set the stage is that there is no likely or even barely likely circumstance that the property remains a golf course or remains in open space casual recreation by itself. The owners are willing to wait out the Chapter 61B or I think, no, it's Chapter, yeah, 61B right of purchase that the town currently has. And they're doing so by reverting back to a normal tax profile and exiting the Chapter 61 program. That process, I think, is already underway. It will eventually remove the right of first refusal sometime in 2022, I believe. So our medium option here, overlay district, but no amendments. We have room for what I think of I think of as a half-sized project, which is still good, positive work, but does leave us open to a few wrinkles that are not as productive as we would like. So we mostly work on the fairway. We get about 15 megawatts of solar, which is, again, I'm very happy to have 15 megawatts of solar anywhere. But there are significant chances that, given where we have to host the arrays and limited abilities to make them within the fairways, that we simply do not get enough solar to afford expensive Cape Cod land because this land is exceptionally valuable on the market. We have found we were making competitive offers for it. And if we have expensive interconnection, which is a wide range of possibilities, but I would say certainly possible, we just can't quite get enough. If we only end up using 20% of the property, it's hard to afford it all. And in that case, there's no future significant conservation restriction, which is what we're really stretching for in the overlay districts and the bylaw amendments. We are working, looking to work harder to hopefully put a better total package together for Falmouth and the community. So with both, yes to both, we're going to shift more development to the interior of the parcels and have less development around the outsides. 27 to 30 megawatts, depending on how much we set back from the neighbors, which gives us a lot more flexibility to do so in the and working in the middle. So with more size, we are much more confident. We're not going to have to reflex back to houses. I say we, I mean David Freel and his family as the owners, much less chance we're going to end up back there. And the goal here, just like we did with AMP and I last year, we set up an arrangement with a solar array in Catuah Road in Sandwich, all wooded, 18 acres of suburban woods, to where we conserve the entire property as part of the solar permit, which was all wooded land. And that is what we want to replace here or repeat here is eventually get ourselves to a position, if we can do more megawatts of solar, we can find ourselves in a spot to donate the entire property, no cost, to the town of Falmouth, of course, presuming that they wish to accept such a property. And along that way, we'll also be able to do things like a comprehensive water quality study for the Kuna Messe Pond, because the folks there naturally are very interested and invested in the ecology and health and viewscapes and altogether ecosystem of the pond. So what you have in front of you now, which you set saw a little bit before, is a rough idea of the location of arrays as the bylaw is written now, presuming we just have an overlay district inclusion, but no bylaw amendments. You'll see we're mostly working in the fairways, and we I have effectively chosen a couple areas to use the two-acre-per-property rule to adjust, to remove some of the trees and work on top of them in places where it made larger contiguous arrays. The challenge being with that regulation up against the conserved land, which, can you everyone see my mouse, by the way? Can someone give me a thumbs up if they can't see it? Anybody? No mouse. I'm seeing shaking heads. So along the north side and the east side, we have conservation land. Along the west side of the south parcel, we also have conservation land. The setbacks in the bylaw are irrespective of the abutting use. And in this case, I think it becomes a little bit wasteful relative to places where we otherwise would put solar arrays, i.e. on the fifth hole right here, opposite these folks' houses. Perfectly workable under the bylaw, open space, no tree cutting, but perhaps not the right balance of places you want to guide development into just open spaces when it's near residential sites. Again, overall, very great site. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. Significant local abutters that does not include the Freel-owned condos to the north is a really good draw for 140, 150 acres. So we see this as being obviously good business to get done, but really not quite as good as it could or should be if we can make some bylaw adjustments for quality of life. And it's something I'd like to emphasize to the board and the folks, you know, tuning in that made, you know, it's a small change or a small part of the wording, but it's important so far as the orchestration. What we've requested in the amendments is for the planning board to may be able or may allow for working in or adjusting the setbacks to other property lines and may allow cutting of trees down in excess of two acres. None of what we have proposed is a mandate requiring it to do so. So there are, in any circumstance where those were approved at town meeting, there is still enormous amounts of diligence to be done, you know, detail by detail across this campus. So none of that is locked in or automatic. We still have tons of work to do, even in the event it's successful. So. Yeah, so I'll move to the next slide. I think I've talked to that one out. If we have amendments, we get something closer to this, again, a desktop-level mock-up of where the solar array would go. The biggest point here is that if we can work within those setbacks of the 100 feet, namely on the east side of the array up top and on the west side of the south array and a couple other places where it comes in more minorly, and we are able to cut down and replace roughly 20 acres of trees in the array, all three properties combined, then we can find ourselves in a position where the solar company can purchase the property for Mr. Freel because we have enough solar to support that kind of purchase. And then we would donate it similar to our Catuah project to the town of Falmouth, should they want the property. I very much expect they would like to see that go into public hands. And the point of that donation, just like we did in our Catuah property, is to conserve everything outside the solar at the onset, maintain the solar as a pollinator meadow in a sort of right in alignment with the UMass Amherst standards that are set for the solar company and notably the Woods Hall, or sorry, not Woods Hall, the Crane Wildlife Area, right adjacent to this, 1,800 acres of maintained established meadow for ecological purposes. And that dovetails really well together as a full conservation package. We can get there if we can have the amendments and if we can get greater flexibility to work within the properties further away from houses and make larger, more, I guess, dense arrays effectively. So our plans there would be on the last item within the setbacks, and I've got a slide on this a bit later, like working right to the south here, clear as day view through the trees, 100 feet on a sand pit over on Blacksmith Shop Road makes a lot of sense when the array is 30 feet below grade. It does not make as much sense when you are straight, level, or a slight downhill to the array area, and there is not significant vegetation between. So I guess I feel a little weird as a developer, I will say, going to a board and asking for higher standards for development. But that's effectively what we're looking at here because I want to do good arrays. And when we can build bigger, we can afford all sorts of better screening and more consideration to the neighbors, including double to triple the setback. I'm going to send the board this presentation at the conclusion of our time on the meeting. But I just wanted to note a couple items here about each amendment and what it does. The reason Amendment 1 is so important is that there are roughly 26 acres of unusable property due to the setbacks purely from conservation land or along the road where a solar array would abut solar array, where there are no residential neighbors or wetlands to set back from by other regs. That is a very significant amount of area to lose that effectively shoves the array closer to the street and other residences, which of course has an impact on the rural character of the area that we otherwise have no screening to continue to mitigate. On Amendment 2, we are, you know, looking to be able to tree-clear, but we are also looking to plant small forests of replacing that acreage with other acreage as or better than those. You know, there are plenty of opportunities within this campus to specifically reforest areas in a balance. And I think a lot of those letters, you know, that you got in opposition naturally see tree-cutting and aren't aware, like, say, the Kuna Messe Pond Association group is, of all the plans we've made to make it a very net positive overall and overwhelmingly, if you consider the property being donated. Some folks have mentioned in these letters the carbon math of the relative value of the trees from a CO2 perspective against the solar arrays. I will send everyone in the group here a link to a couple documents I have made in response to the Energy Committee asking a very similar question. The answer is overwhelmingly, the solar is crazy and stronger from a CO2 perspective, even before you consider we're going to replace every tree by acre that we cut down and donate the property if we can get this to work. And that's where I come to the last big note on this. And that's where I come to the last big note on this, mixed ecology conservation. If we set this up to conserve, which is everyone's goal, not only will we keep. You know, a large housing tract from being developed. I'm not against affordable housing by any means, but I think a time and a place and a scale. Uh, might make more sense than a hundred and fifty acres here in Northern Falmouth. The full design of the array uses eighty of the hundred and fifty acres, so it's going to get no bigger, probably smaller than that. So conservation right up front. We're immediately going to put seventy of those acres right into woodland, right? And then the other eighty are going to become a pollinator meadow. Just like the Crane Wildlife Area next door. And I realize, I'm sorry, that's a little redundant from before, but I, I just felt like it was worth emphasizing. And we're trying to do that in a way that costs the citizens of Falmouth nothing. By the time we lease a property for forty years, it is very similar to purchasing it. And we found in our first run up in Sandwich last year that we could put together a package that would have great public value. If we could get the right density of silver on the site against the cost and acreage of the property. And uh, Bob will have a little bit to say on the earth moving regulations, but he noticed in the bylaws that potentially there is a. I think an unintentional conflict in uh, earth moving over a larger area like the silver proposes. Uh, here, uh, that may be problematic that would be worth uh, cleaning up. And we're going to dive a little bit into the screening topic here. Uh, just to give you an example of why I'm, I'm going to harp on this and why I'm driving towards it. I want to do good projects that I can put my name on and I want them to be good for the neighbors because no one. You know, people have their houses and they are enormous personal and financial investments. And I, one of my jobs as a developer is to make sure that doesn't have any change. So here is eleven Ashamet Road, two neighbors here, I believe, uh, who, uh, they might be the same owner, but. Uh, right here and on the eleven Ashamet, they're right south of this third hole. This is the view from their driveway right here since summer. So this is as thick as it gets. A hundred feet is the second little nub. On this green, right there. Second nub, if you look at the bottom right picture, you can see that same spot on the, the course. That's a hundred feet no touch. This is the view they'll have. Of the solar array starting, you know, some feet behind that, not immediately behind, but certainly not across the fairway like you can see. We are proposing to put in berms to block straight visuals landscaped over the top with trees in front. And will of course, work on the town land to the left here if they'll let us. When we do a comprehensive project, which would probably be no problem if we were intending to donate the land anyway, dovetails really well. This is the kind of unintentional view that you're going to get with the current regs. That I think you guys can empower yourselves with these changes to, when appropriate. Uh, take a higher standard. I don't think this will be the last solar array that enters Falmouth. Uh, and anything that gets through town meeting obviously would have the bylaw rights. And as they are, uh, this is certainly quite possible uh, to have happen. So the, this is just an example of why I'm, I mean, as a, if I put myself in this, if you lived here, what would you want standard? And I don't think it's this, if it's a solar array, I think you'd like us to go the extra mile or the right mile. And make this woodland again from your vantage. So that's part of the earth moving to be able to use some of the soil to build a berm and as part of working in that setback. You'll notice here what we're proposing on our bylaw compliant design, which is right, or the bylaw in design, which is what I snipped this from. Is a double setback. Just to the edge of the fence and roughly, yeah, three hundred feet was the standard we set. From the property line to the array. That's the kind of increased setback we can do when we can work in the hundred foot buffer. Around the rest of the site and the woodlands in the middle to get back what amounts to thirty five acres of. Non-abutting residential area of the properties. Uh, and with that, uh, the defense will rest and hand it back over uh, to Bob.
Thanks. I'd like to just uh, comment a little bit of a repetition, not much. Um, on a couple of, of items. Um, Evan uh, mentioned the. Uh, length of the property that abuts conservation land or along the street. Just the portion of the property that abuts the um. The conservation property is more than a mile and a half. It's more than eight thousand, somewhere between eight thousand and ten thousand um, linear feet. Abut conservation property. A hundred foot set and most of that is golf course area that has already been cleared. A hundred feet wide. Uh, by eight thousandths feet comes to about nineteen acres. That's nineteen acres that can't be used. For residential development, there'd be no setback requirement other than ten feet for your house. Your fence can be on the line. Three feet for a shed from the line. The hundred foot setback from solar arrays was intended to protect people. It was intended to protect residents. Um, residential property abutting solar arrays. We don't need to have that hundred foot setback apply when the property. Abuts conservation property. And that would be in the discretion of the uh, the planning board. But you'd be able to reduce that. Right now you can't reduce it. And it's a no touch area. You can't landscape it or create berms either is what Evan was uh, trying to. Uh, to tell you. So I, I, I think that. That is one of the key changes, perhaps the most important change. Uh, that we're suggesting that the planning board have the discretion when the property abuts conservation land. Um, and we added also when it abuts property in the same ownership. Shouldn't have to have a hundred foot setback from the property line or immediately cross the street from property in the same ownership. Uh, that the planning board would have the discretion in its wisdom to reduce the setback to make a better project in what. Um, Evan is saying is that if we have that, we can afford to have greater buffers. Where they matter, where there are um, uh, residents. Now, I'd like to also discuss the provision we put in there that um. Said earth moving regulations wouldn't apply. We don't think that the earth moving regulations do apply. But our bylaw is not clear about that. The earth moving regulations have to do with moving earth. In gravel and sand mining operations. In fact, in order to control those operations, that bylaw only applies to a maximum of five acres at a time. It only allows a special permit to have a life of three years before it needs to be renewed. Um, and it has an exception for any residential development, any structures, buildings. Or roads. But it doesn't have an exception for solar arrays. And in fact, it also says you can't do this earth moving. In a water resource protection district, which would mean you couldn't do the solar arrays. That require any amount of earth moving to speak of. Um, on the easterly side of uh. Blacksmith Shop Road and Locust Field Road, because those are in a water resource protection district. The point is that bylaw could arguably apply to solar arrays. But it clearly isn't intended to, it shouldn't. And all we wanted to do is be clear that it doesn't. That we will be able to move earth around subject to the sp- planning board's um. Site plan review. So I think that's um. That's pretty important. The present bylaw says that. Solar arrays, ground, uh, large scale ground mounted solar arrays require a minimum of seven acres. It says by right. You can clear two of those acres. So on a smaller project, you can clear twenty nine percent. Of the site. By right. When you think about that. Our suggestion that the planning board in its discretion be allowed to allow more than two acres to be cleared on a large project. Simply makes sense. You can clear two out of seven, but you can't clear four out of fifty. The planning board ought to have its discretion. But we have provided, the language says that when we clear more than. Two acres. For any access the planning board may require, and we would be happy to have it changed to shall require. Shall require mitigation. In the form of uh, reforestation. Um, or the acquisition of open space on or off the site. Now. I don't think Evan necessarily needs to put it back on, but there's actually a portion of the golf course, a seven acre piece by itself. Between houses along Boxbury Hill Road and some of the. Conservation property that is the fourth hole of the golf course. Our intention is to reforest that portion of the golf course. So there's seven acres right there. And so Evan is showing that and the next hole, the fifth hole on the golf course starts across the street. And it runs along Boxbury Hill Road. And the abutters on the other side of the street have asked if perhaps we could avoid the. Solar array in that area. So our thinking is that we would also be able to reforest that. So the point is when we're talking about. Doing some cutting in the middle of the property and in locations that make for a better solar rate. We're proposing to reforest areas. Um, and we think that there will be more forested areas. When we're, when we're done than we are starting with, but that will be up to the planning board. We even originally suggested that these changes be allowed only by special permit. Lifting the standard. And if you wanted to do that, we think that'd be okay. Tom Bott suggested that with solar, um, this bylaw, it should be by right, but subject to site plan review. So we didn't provide for a special permit process and that's okay too. I think that the planning board has. Substantial authority and discretion under site plan review. And the language we've used may allow an increase, but shall, if you wish to change it to that. Uh, shall require mitigation, fine with us. Now, the planning board can make a recommendation in favor of this article. Or it could make a recommendation for indefinite postponement. I hope you don't do that. Or you can make a recommendation that would involve some modification to it. So I would suggest that you do make it, shall provide mitigation uh, for that excess uh, uh, clearing. Um, in addition, we could also put a limit, we've said twenty percent theoretically, there could be another project even bigger. We could put a, uh, an acre limit, we suggest perhaps not more than acres, eight acres cleared. On any, on any lot, we could discuss what you think would be a good compromise if necessary. But um, I just wanted to point those things out about how. Um, carefully we've thought through this, how even though town meeting. Um, passed a bylaw only um, in two thousand eighteen that uh, first. Large scale solar arrays. Um. We can make it better. We are proposing to make it better on a site which we uh, we think we have a good use. And um, with those changes in particularly can uh, improve the um. The output, which is a, a huge difference uh, to get up to. From fifteen to uh, twenty six or twenty seven uh, megawatts. Um. Evan didn't say so, but he's told me that the calculations um. Are that. Um, the output from this. A project when fully developed would be uh, uh, from one sixth to one seventh. Of the entire electrical needs in the town of Falmouth. Now, of course, the electricity goes to the grid, but the goal is uh, is to have a net zero emissions. This is a really significant, and although some of the letters say. We should do smaller arrays or there's an urgency for this type of thing. Um, that is far beyond this particular property. But we do think that this property, um, that this is a really good you, future use of the property. Um. So with that, um. Again, I'd like, I hope that you'll leave the hearing open and consider uh, further information that comes in. I'm sure you'll get it from people in favor and, and otherwise, but. Um. We think we have a.
Matt had a.
Very good project. Thanks.
Bob, I think Matt had a couple of points he wanted to catch up with. And then I've just got a, just a couple of little cleanup points and I think we'll uh, we'll rest.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, for the record, Matt Terry, attorney at the law firm of Amen, Clower and Falmouth. Uh, one of the concepts that I think has been raised in some of the correspondence. Is that uh, if the bylaw changes, the discretion that we're looking to give to the planning board. Is implemented, that it would have townwide implications. And what we need to be mindful of is that that's not true. Because the solar overlay district currently comprises about seven to nine parcels off of Blacksmith Shop Road. We would be looking to expand it just to this golf course and those specific assessed parcels. That the chair read out at the start of the meeting. So the planning board um. And the, and town meeting would have the discretion to expand or decide not to expand the solar overlay district. To other projects down the pipeline. Uh, if they feel like uh, the revised bylaws. Might not be applicable or might result in unintended consequences to future projects. They could be addressed at that time and the planning board would have the discretion to do so. So this isn't something where we're opening it up to the entire town of Falmouth. It's uh, limited in the sense of the um, solar bylaw district expansion. Um, and then one other point that I wanted to sort of tee up for Evan quickly and then hand off to him. Is this, this notion that we are in a climate emergency. Um, but nevertheless, this is um, the right idea and the wrong location. Um, this uh, property, the hundred and fifty acres. A, a, a huge portion of it has already been improved. Uh, so we're not talking about uh, an undisturbed forest. We're talking about as, as Bob has said, twenty acres potentially of clearing on a hundred and fifty acre site. And the, in the interior of what is already uh, improved land for recreational sites. So the notion that there are properties out there in Falmouth that are um, landfills or. Uh, um, mining locations. Uh, or other kind of brownfield sites where we could accomplish the same thing. Um, really isn't the case and, and the same is true for. Trying to get to the same level of energy independence and clean energy, just based on, you know, rooftops and canopies. Uh, the math just doesn't add up that even if we were to do that on the vast majority of. Uh, horizontal or slanted, uh, you know, roofs around Falmouth. We would not get the same kind of input that we would get from this one project. So I wanted to make those few points and then hand it over to Evan. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And I guess the phrase that comes to mind here, uh, to sort of sew this together, some other tangent points. Is I don't want people to not be able to forest, see the forest for the trees. That what we've got on one side of this is the ability to adjust uh, active golf course. Uh, for twenty acres of trees and some setback considerations only where it's against conservation or yourself. That's not a very repeatable uh, or threatening situation around Falmouth. In exchange for what amounts to a small solar array on every roof in Falmouth. Uh, at thirty megawatts, we've got seventy thousand panels across this site. Falmouth has approximately fourteen thousand households. That's a five panel solar array on every roof in town in one go. If you, you're the comparative option to put everything on rooftops and landfills. By the way, that landfill group earlier, that looks awesome. I was always wondering why you guys didn't have another bite at your landfill. Turns out you. I was always wondering why you guys didn't have another bite at your landfill. Turns out you did. Good news. But there just aren't enough landfills and parking lots to make that work. But this gets you, you know, a five megawatt panels equivalent on every house in town is still fifteen percent of your energy use electrically wise. You need it everywhere. There's a reason it is considered a climate emergency and not just, you know, casual urgency. So we need everything. So taking sites like this one that is previously developed is exactly what the smart program, the solar regs at the state level want us to do. They don't want us going, finding the equivalent of the Kuna Mesut Reservation right next door that is forested. They want us working on previously developed land, which is what this is. Other small items there, we didn't cover the economics. I'll back up. By comparison for the, you know, like putting this to the convenience store, so you guys can understand the scale and the impressiveness of what we're trying to do here. Your, the convenience store project down in the south end of Falmouth, roughly three hundred and fifty kilowatts if that was built today. Falmouth would need approximately one hundred of those to equal the same electrical output as this campus. So from a, you know, there's a lot of things to balance. But I would guesstimate that some folks would be rather upset as you get towards a net zero kind of organization of your grid to have a hundred more of those around town. When you could have one item here and donate the land. And that becomes a much, I mean, more, I guess it just fits better in between the Francis, you know, Acra wildlife area that is literally mode to keep the forests down because reforestation is threatening that habitat. The co-location and conservation of different ecologies is hugely important. And it just fits. You know, we are two thousand feet away from eighteen hundred acres of land that the pollinator meadows will do will perfectly dovetail into. So I like, I like to emphasize, trees are not the only worthwhile ecology to conserve. Quite a lot of work goes into making good meadows that support a variety of habitats that are threatened in Cape Cod because fields that aren't conserved become houses. And everything that isn't conserved or is conserved becomes trees. And that can create some civic challenges that we can support rounding out. And the last point that comes to mind since we were speaking of the economics on the earlier group with the EDIC is that, you know, we presented this to the town of Falmouth and its administration earlier this year. And from whatever the course pays now, you know, we expect to see if we can do the full size of the array. You know, about a half million of new value annually to the town of Falmouth for this work. And it, you know, for the clean energy of it. That's in addition theoretically to having the entire property worth well north of ten million on the market today donated at no cost. So, you know, I would absolutely love to add that to your inventory of long-term conservation plans. And be able to manage some really nice pollinator meadows that really well support the surrounding conserve land. And I think that's where I'm going to leave it off. I've got one question for the board, though. And if you could note, if you're going to read letters, where those oppositions come from. You know, I've been really thorough, I think, in trying to work with the neighbors around the, the properties. So with one, I've missed some people. I'd certainly like to know them. And two, I would like to emphasize that almost all of our signatures from the neighborhoods came from the surrounding neighborhoods. I guess one thing I want to show you on my screen to emphasize where I think we've earned some community support here from the community itself. Mr. Conrad Huguen is, I think he's with us tonight in the audience. He's the headline signature on our petition. He lives right here. Oh, I gotta click that off. He lives right here at Twenty Theater Drive. He is, oh, right here. He is probably the most intimate neighbor we could have. Immediately south of the array, immediately next to the course operations, immediately next to Round Pond on the water side, obviously nested right in here in this group. I feel it is exceptionally important to earn the you know, approval of the neighbors where and when you can, especially those who are immediately abiding you. And I think we've, if, you know, the letter from the Kuna Mesut Pond Association, many of whom are around the pond here, I think also support that. And you know, regardless of, you know, what we hear tonight. Hopefully all good, but certainly everyone has their opinion. I'm going to keep working with those folks. So if there are things we've missed in the design, I'd like to, yeah, sort of cover the, the backstops to that. In the event that you approve, the town meeting approves the changes, we still have to go through, you know, working with the Cape Cod Commission, we still have to go through working with the planning board. In the event we donate the land, we still have to get to a ground lease with the town of Falmouth. So, and that's in addition to Conservation Commission work on conserve, conserve land and other regulatory bodies around the state. So there are plenty of times when everyone is going to have all the opportunities to input the project and ensure that it's the right balance of work. Certainly not just from the solar perspective. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and I look forward to any questions the board may have.
I wanted to thank you all for your presentation. And I'd like to know if anybody on the board has any questions. Remember, we are not discussing this. Have you any questions for greater understanding amongst the board members, please? Okay, I do have one. Oh, Bob, go ahead and take yourself off mute, please.
Yeah. We have solar panels on our house, and we had to take down ten significant trees. But every month we get an accounting of the carbon equivalent that we have taken out by a tree count. And I'm wondering if you could give us kind of the idea of how many, how many trees you, you take down versus the benefit that those trees. I, I'm not wording this right, but I, I calculated that with the ten trees that we took down for our solar panels has been the equivalent of about six hundred and thirty, six hundred and forty trees. So I'm just wondering if you could kind of give us that type of equivalency.
It looks like Evan is anxious to let you know the answer to that.
Yes, sir, and ma'am. So it's, I, I call this the carbon math. And it is pretty stark and it's sneaky because people don't realize how little each acre contributes. And there are tons of acres, but each acre is not by itself moving the needle, but how significantly dirty the grid is. So let me, let me pull up here. I'm going to share a screen in just a moment, but I have to multitask this to pull it off. So I've got to speak while I'm doing this, open this carbon math spreadsheet. And I'm, I got this question from the Energy Committee. And it's about the rough math. I'll, I'll give you the short version for everyone listening at home. If I consider the entire property tree and looking at will the carbon sequestration in forty years, which is the array's lifespan against a hundred years of the trees growing, as if you conserved it and took the whole hundred worth of value. And I consider that over the next thirty years, the grid becomes a hundred percent clean. The math is still eight to ten to one in favor of the solar array for a hundred percent wooded property. Another way to look at that is there is absolutely no way in the history of Massachusetts you could do thirteen megawatts of solar and only knock out twenty acres of trees if you were going to do it in a wooded area. That's, it takes three acres, even in a dense situation, to do a megawatt. So I'd like to think by doing these lower value golf course trees that we're preventing the project somewhere else from happening. Because the more megawatts you get, the less you need afterwards. Eventually you'll hit your needs. The relative thing to your house, and that's a fantastic comparison. I don't think, like, I don't think you could get away with putting a rooftop system in Falmouth on every house and cut down less than twenty acres of trees. You know, two hundred trees per acre in a large forest. So that's implying that you could cut down over twenty acres, two hundred trees, four thousand trees and get away over fourteen thousand houses, one tree every fourth house at best. That's going to be real hard to do, especially when your neighbors own real close property lines. They're probably not going to cut down their trees for you. So I think you'll actually cut down less trees than putting this on residential rooftops, which is of course highly encouraged. A long answer to a short question.
Evan, just to add to that, and it's so important, we are proposing to reforest as much area as we would want to cut. We are talking about moving forest around. I know that we're not going to plant forty-year-old trees. But we can plant the best trees for the situation, and they will grow, and they will replace the forest. And that needs to be taken into account besides everything that Evan just said. And furthermore, we're not dealing with a hundred percent wooded tract. We're only talking about twenty acres as a maximum to be cut out of a hundred and forty acres. That's fourteen acres more than the bylaw presently allows. And we may not need to cut down that much, but whatever is cut down is going to be more than replaced by a, a new forestation on that fourth hole, on the fifth hole, and in other places.
Okay, my question has to do with reforestation. Because you could reforest by one-foot seedlings, you can reforest by two-inch caliper trees. I don't know what you're proposing when you say reforestation.
Well, first of all, the planning board will make that decision. The planning board will be able to require mitigation that it deems adequate. We're planning to do the best job possible, and I hope that the planning board helps us and makes us to do that. Now, we're not going to plant forty-year-old trees. They're not going to be eight-inch caliper. So somewhere between the seedling and the, and the eight inches, the planning board should decide what should go in there.
Okay, Charlotte. Take yourself off mute, Charlotte.
Like to ask, I think we all know what the arrays look like, but that's not all that comes on site with the solar installation. Could you please describe to us the kind of security provisions? What would you have for fencing? And what are the buildings that go along with this in addition to the solar arrays?
Yes, ma'am. So the, so the fence line is typically chain link. This case, you know, we've looked at doing wooden fencing, but there were no vantage points where it made a lot of sense. So it'll be chain link, we'll raise it six inches off the ground to a foot to allow for wildlife underneath and still provides physical security. There are no buildings associated with the array. So inside that fence line, which is locked at all times, but access is given to emergency services and the other town authority who needs it. You have inverters and transformers, which put the power from DC to AC and send it to the grid. That's think of a eight by eight by twelve piece of equipment sitting on a concrete pad. It's a big metal box. And then you have battery boxes with these modern arrays that are, that come on the back of flatbed trucks and are put similarly onto concrete pads. We have proposed those to be in the middle of the two north properties as far away from a butters as we can get and providing good access to the fire departments in the event they're ever needed. And the south property has that in the dead middle of the array. Those are the only things that make any significant noise. They have fans because all electronics need cooling. But the goal is to put them in the middle of the site, out of sight, out of mind. And then the array is just a big fenced area that allows wildlife through. Deer can jump right over it, smaller things can go underneath it, and the birds don't much care.
Evan, I'd like to add, if I can, and it relates to Charlotte's inquiry about a specific aspect of the work that would be done. Is that we, we actually have developed over the course of months, very specific, large-scale plans for the project. They've been done by Cape and Islands Engineering. They have been reviewed by the Kuna Mesut Pond Association. They have all that detail. We felt that presenting that at this time was really not the not, we're getting down into the the weeds that I didn't think was appropriate for, for tonight.
Ma'am, would you like to see those real quick?
Yes.
All right. Prepare for a lot of colors. So here is an example of the south array. Perspective plans, absolutely just, you know, us working on paper. Everyone has the colorful array area up, purple and yellow, and I mean, someone give me a thumbs up. You guys see some nod heads, fantastic. So by example here, to talk about the design, power comes down Boxbury Hill. We have a small driveway over here that bring, you know, comes right off the street, delivers power to the inverter and battery pads in the middle. Very just mocked up here as a block in the middle of the property. We use the fairways, we take the trees down in the, the backside. And this is pre my discussions with Mr. Nate Bent right here. And the other, whose names escape me. Oh, I'm gonna, I think Tim and Joan right here, we talked with, actually on Monday, so I just got ahold of them recently. They responded as, got in touch with me as a result of this meeting. So wonderful. And this is where I think the fifth hole that we can probably leave off if we can work bigger on the other properties. So this fence line, for instance, would start maybe like right here, would come across the backside of these woods. And then we would eventually rope in this property here, working up next to the conservation land, but staying well away from house, house, house. And these guys here in Fox Run Lane, who are just as close as other folks. But what I've tried to do here, I guess importantly, I'm trying to keep two hundred and fifty feet between, at minimum, between a house and the array. And of course landscaping and berms all here with this full size. I think it's going to get smaller when we all said and done. An example of the north arrays that I mentioned before, come on computer, let's do this. I believe in you. Doesn't seem to want to cooperate. Give me just a second. I'm going to see if I can catch this thing up.
Evan, while you're looking for that, I had a couple of additional things that we're thinking about and have started to show on the plans. And that is that there would be a system of trails along Kuna Mesut Pond, and wherever we can link them into existing trail systems in the conservation areas, we would do that. That'd be a benefit. Also, in an area that I Evan can show you on the plan he's got now, there's an area where there's the presently the five condominiums that would, that are owned by the Freel. In that area, we're thinking we would actually make that available for affordable housing, whether in that, that building or in new, a new building. We, we don't want to significantly increase the housing that's on this, these properties. The goal here is to, you know, certainly not introduce new nutrients to Kuna Mesut Pond and but that's an area where we have some existing housing and there are certainly opportunities preserved for the town to have affordable housing. The goal here is, is not a project that was mixed use necessarily. This would be something that the town could do all affordable housing for. And across the street at the intersection of Ranch Road and Boxbury Hill Road, Evan can also point out, that's an area that has intentionally been left out of, of the solar array because it's a, it's a recreation area used by families for sledding in the winter in particular. And the neighbors requested that that be left out, and it's been left out. We just want to get across to you the idea that there is a great amount of detail to be worked on this, but that this can end up being a great project.
Thank you, Bob. Just one small note, I would say it's most accurate. We are working with the Kuna Mesut Pond Association, who has formed a Trails Advisory Committee to study and figure out what, if any, trails they might like to integrate into the property as it would be conserved. So, you know, it's not a, you know, that, that's a big community decision. They've expressed interest, but also of course, normal amounts of caution. So that's a, I guess that's a, yeah, you work with a community over years to take that, to make that happen. So as, as you asked, ma'am, like here would be our battery and inverter units saddled on Boxbury Hill Road. Putting landscaping on this as an allowable use in the setbacks. Again, these are hundred-foot setbacks to the street, by the way. Again, these are hundred foot setbacks to the street, by the way, against Boxberry Hill. But being able to use the interim feet, let us put berms and landscaping around everything. Here's the example I showed you before, right over here. Berms and everything, so it's woods all the way down. Some seasons you'll be able to see through it. Most it's not going to be intrusive. That's the goal. And here we have two sled hills. I cannot be the developer who kills sled hill for the high school kids. I just can't do that. So we've got, you know, from the vantage here, we've got this is down and up. So we set the array back, you know, three, four hundred feet from this area. Same thing over here, areas we'd otherwise could work in, but otherwise feel it's the right balance with the community. And you're next to Conrad down here, for instance, one of the things he's expressed that aren't on the plans yet, but they'll get there. You know, this is where we put another berm and landscaping. I just I missed it on the plans for these neighbors down here. So then you've got good visual blocking and we'll probably take out some of the sheds and the other equipment. You know, that are normal for a golf course, but not needed for a solar array. One more thing to lessen the impact on the water system in this area. Does that answer your question, ma'am? A super long answer to a super short question.
No, I really appreciate your answer for the question. Thank you very much. I just have one other question. Where on or near the Cape, could any one of us go to see, this is an industrial scale enterprise you've got going here, where could we go to see something on this scale so that we could know in advance what it might be like?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, that's an excellent question. I feel like I have an excellent answer. So I developed with another company that AMP since purchased, because they buy operating systems, a property in Westport, Massachusetts. That is fourteen megawatts in total, but I believe there's one that's seven to eight megawatts. And that's really big for solar it used to be, but it's a it gets you to comparable scale. It is on the Sampson Farm in Westport, Massachusetts. Let me see if I can bring up Google Maps to get you there.
Could you say that in acreage? I don't I can't get from megawatts to a scale. What is the Sampson Farm in acreage?
One second, and that's in Westport. Ooh, it's probably the farm is fifty plus acres? Yeah, let's see my I have to stop the sharing to let my computer catch up. It's several sites. Let's call it thirty to forty acres per site. So comparable size, a little smaller, but it's you know, there aren't big arrays in Cape Cod I can point you to. This would be the largest. So that's and that's one I I know the landowners AMP obviously can introduce you to the site and take you on the property. Because they lease it, so they have the ability to show you around.
And it'd be the top size of what you're proposing.
Yes, ma'am. Let me uh, let me share the screen again now that it's popped up. Here we go. And please don't, for you guys listening, please don't go see April Sampson or Jerome there by yourselves. They are wonderful, but private people. But they will be certainly happy to work with AMP to show a couple of folks the array on a schedule. So here is, I think, probably seven to eight megawatts on the backside of a farm. This was a potato farm. It still is, they just farm less acres. Here is probably a five or five megawatt array. And there's a smaller array, two and a half, three megawatts up here. Those are the closest big ones that come immediately to mind that I know AMP operates, so we can show you intimately.
And what is the scale of the one in Sandwich?
So it would be thirty total, roughly, if we get the big version of it. Ten to twelve. Ten and probably only four to five on the south property, once we take out the fifth hole. So you know, rough numbers. So these I don't kid anyone. These are significant undertakings. They move the needle and are part of the solution on the climate side. Where it's it's a significant undertaking, we think that's where we can afford to potentially conserve a full hundred and fifty acres of Cape Cod real estate at no public cost. Takes a lot to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. Are there, is there any other question? Pam and unmute yourself, Pam. You're still muted, Pam.
I'm going to have to shift over from one device to another because my power is running out. Let me shut this off. So I was thrilled to hear the idea of affordable housing in the area. Would you also maybe be willing to donate a percentage of the power to perhaps provide energy for the affordable housing where that to be built?
Yes, ma'am. So I've got I've got a lot of thoughts on that. This is going to be fun. So within the solar program, the whole what we're hoping to do, and this is a whole other can of worms. We are hoping to operate and or have the town of Falmouth actually be given an ownership stake in the array. The solar program likes that, especially on publicly owned land. Like there's a real nice dovetail there. That program does not let us sell power to individual customers.
Right.
But what I like, what I think is better than that is cash. If the town gets superior value, they can turn that cash into anything they want. But on the affordable housing side, especially that north area where those condos are, I mean, those condos are fine, but they're old. I'm sure they leak like a sieve. You know, they're they weren't designed to be super net zero. What I would like to work with Falmouth on again, over the years, we would take to do this are net zero houses with their own arrays on the roof because they're designed for it. So they wouldn't need to buy electricity from anyone. It'd be like, you know, you go with electric HVAC, you keep it real nice and tight on the insulation package. You get solar arrays on the roof for just the house. You can do a lot of interesting things if you build it from scratch. So that's where I see a couple of houses there. Houses screen the neighborhood off great, right? You don't see through a house. And then you have the opportunity to make a real great, you know, flagship affordable workforce housing, just, you know, a couple of units there. You know, that just dovetails real well in and we don't have to be in a rush on.
Great. Yeah, I'd like to see more than just a couple, but.
I've got to balance everyone's wants there, but I think there's definitely something we could pull off. Again, we'd effectively be donating the land of the town of Falmouth. That's not a one way transaction. That's a negotiation in a weird way for what everyone wants to see it become. So you, the assistant town manager mentioned that they wanted, you know, they like the idea of finding a good spot to tuck some of that away with a hundred and fifty acres. I think we can do it.
Great. Okay. Thank you. I don't know that anybody else on the board has any, yes, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick points that I don't think it's come up prior to now. When Evan was showing the batteries on the plans, the notion behind those batteries is that the array is productive for more than just the time that the sun is out. So in the middle of the summer, you know, when the array is is operating at peak capacity, it collects and stores energy in the battery. And then when everyone comes home from work or from the beach and turns on their air conditioning as the sun is setting, the batteries allow the array to provide energy to the grid to then lower prices for everyone at a time when consumption and demand is at its highest.
Evan, did I, I am so proud of how much you've learned from all my rants. And that is exactly accurate. You have to operate the array in a manner that drives energy prices down.
Also worth pointing out, and we haven't said it, is that this location is particularly convenient to existing infrastructure of the utility companies.
Substation is right next door. Those are really like it. A lot of neighbors, a lot of cleared land, great substation.
And the final point I wanted to raise that I also don't think has been touched upon is, you know, any of the environmental risk around these projects with so many environmentally sensitive areas budding. The panels themselves are completely inert. They do not contain cadmium. They are non toxic. Essentially, the only hazardous materials on the one hundred and fifty acres would be inside the batteries, which is, you know, they have a number of different failsafes around any kind of contamination risk there. So we're proposing going from a use that is fairly intensive with respect to environmental impact to a much more benign use, even given the intensity across the acreage we're proposing, where the solar panels themselves do not present an environmental risk. And Evan, I think you've said that this particular kind of panel that we would use has been approved in Massachusetts to float on top of reservoirs.
Yes, sir. So for everyone's education, because I've definitely seen some some people taking a stab at this that just they don't have the quite the depth of knowledge in the the products themselves. There is a different kind of chemistry that makes a different kind of solar panel called thin film compared to normal silicon wafers. The thin film stuff is has is called cadmium telluride. It's the chemistry that makes the solar photovoltaic stuff work. We will never use those in New England. They are desert, they are panels designed to work great in deserts because they do very well in the heat. Solar, like all electronics, suffers in the heat. Those suffer way less. We'll never use them. They're not dangerous even by themselves, but we'll never use them here. I take seventeen conditions on a permit, keeping that in line. So it's just one of the things that if you Google solar panel scary, you know, that'll come up, but it's it's really a bit of a red herring on what you might consider risks on a site. The panels are inert. They don't let water in or out because that then the electricity wouldn't work. Thank you, Matt.
Charlotte?
Pat, forgive me. I know you want to get onto the letters and this is.
Well, it's getting on in time too. We're going to be here till this night.
But I have a question. It's probably a very stupid question. But two, two and a half years ago, after much study, we set up a solar overlay district. And we thought that it would be attractive to developers in a way. You've hurt our feelings. You've decided you want to be somewhere else. Why? Why? Why didn't you look at that?
So I absolutely would love to work in the solar overlay district. But the well, I think you guys, the town has some property it owns in that district. I would love to work on that with you. So I will propose an RFP in the future, not the this point of tonight. It's all otherwise private property. I can't make, and this goes back to like why you don't do it X and Y and Z places. Private property owners have to be willing to do this. It's harder to get a solar array in Cape Cod, I think, than a sand and gravel pit. So there are like, if it's a lot of that land is, you know, the Lawrence Lynch and Cape Cod aggregates, I can't make them work with me. I would love to work on those spots, but it really come, the biggest filter of any development process is finding a landowner willing to stick it with you for several years and do solar. Biggest filter. So the challenge of the overlay district is that it sets up, you know, I think, three, four, five owners there of land. And that's all you have to work with and the town is one of them. So if Lawrence Lynch doesn't want to mine out at site or walk away from a, you know, a sand and gravel operation, which is obviously needed and profitable and all the other things, I mean, they're not going to work with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tom. I think we need to move on at this point to the letters. I do not know, you have your finger on that one, how many are there that want to be elevated. But we, as I had indicated, we have very few in support that I know of that have come in. And one is the Kuna Mesut Pond Association. Is there anyone there from the Kuna Mesut Pond Association who wishes to read their letter? It's a short one. Or do they want me to read it?
Yeah, I have three folks who I know are wishing to be elevated and come in and present the Energy Committee. That's Megan Ambler, three hundred committee, Jessica Rittenhour and Rosemary Carey from the Energy Committee as well. I have the Kuna Mesut Pond Association's letter here as well, the ZBAs letter and a couple as we had talked about, so.
Okay, well, what I propose to do, since we had so few that are on the positive side, is to speak to those. It's only three. And then we go to the others. Does that make sense to you?
By with me, ma'am. You're the chair, but I've got I've got three letters from Conrad Huguen, from the Freels and from the Kuna Mesut Pond Association, all queued up and happy to read if you'd like.
Okay. Okay, I have one from Mr. Fuel, Frule, Freel, I'm sorry, but I don't have one from Conrad Huguen. So that's another one that you have that I do not have.
I'll be happy to knock them all out for you if you like.
Go with it.
All right. So first, from Conrad Huguen, twenty Theater Drive, previously mentioned in the presentation. To whom it may concern, I am writing as a private citizen to express my support for the petition articles twenty one and twenty two be discussed at the Falmouth Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, February twenty third. My understanding is that all these amendments will maximize the efficiency of land usage for the proposed solar array, which will increase tenfold the resources committed by the developer for the benefit of Falmouth residents, including the purchase of conservation land, effective mitigation measures such as screening and construction of hiking trails. Trees that are moved from the centers of the parcels will be offset by an equal acreage of new trees planted along the edges for screening. Solar energy projects like the proposed array at the Cape Cod Country Club are critical for the future of the planet. AMP has reached out to the neighbors and engaged with us constructively from the beginning to ensure that our concerns are addressed. In my view, the project is at full scope, at its fullest scope, is the best possible outcome for the parcels following the closure of the golf course. It'll provide significant benefits for the community, including clean energy and long term stewardship of the land and surrounding ponds through environmentally sustainable management practices and purchase of land for conservation. For those reasons, I urge the town to vote to pass the amendments for Article XL VDIII, Solar Overlays Bylaw. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Conrad Huguen. From Mr. Freel, who is much previously as well, owners of the Country Club. Dear Planning Board members, I'm David Freel, and pardon me if I mispronounced your name, Mr. Freel. Owner and operator of the past forty years or so of the Cape Cod Country Club. I'm writing to express my family's support for solar development being proposed on our golf course properties and to explain our thought process behind it from the perspective of a business owner. Over the past decade, it has become apparent to us that the golf course industry is contracting not only in the United States, but especially on the Cape. Expansion of golf courses on the Cape over the past decade or two, having the reduction of the number of golfers nationwide, has forced me from a financial viability standpoint to consider other land use options for the Cape Cod Country Club. Beginning in two thousand nineteen, we began exploring the highest and best use for the property. It quickly became evident that residential development was not only the best alternative use for the land. It's primarily permitted use under zoning and other development regulations. While the process developing alternative residential development plans for our property, we were put in touch with AMP Energy to express serious interest in leasing our land for large scale solar arrays as an alternative to our developing and selling our land for housing development. We decided that the AMP proposal was the best economic alternative for the development of our property and was a plan that reduced the development impacts of the land. The golf course could continue to operate normally during the due diligence and approval process to be undertaken by AMP. Further, if AMP was unable to put solar arrays on the property to make it a financially viable operation, we will still be able to pivot back to the housing development alternatives as our second choice. In the past month or so, we have been in discussions with AMP and Evan Turner about a possible conservation of the land to propose bylaw amendments passed at the next town meeting. If they're successful in securing a favorable town meeting vote on the bylaw adjustments, they are seeking for the larger array, solar arrays on our property. We believe we can resolve the business in legal terms necessary to conserve the property long term by donations to the town of Falmouth. However, without the proposed amendments to the current overlay district and its regulations, AMP cannot develop enough solar to make it viable from a business perspective to donate and conserve one hundred and fifty acres prime Cape Cod real estate. My family and I hope that Falmouth will agree to support the development of our property and the proposed clean solar energy and conservation opportunities this town in Cape Cod will benefit from. Sincerely, David Freel. And the third letter from the Kuna Mesut Pond Association. From the Board, Kuna Mesut Bond Pond Association Board of Directors. Dear members of the Falmouth Planning Board, the Kuna Mesut Pond Association, a membership association of one hundred and twenty eight neighbors and friends of Kuna Mesut Pond, with a mission to enhance and maintain the ecological balance of the pond and the character of the Hatchville community, would like to state our support today in regard to the zoning articles addressed addressing the conservation, the conversion of the Cape Cod Country Club Golf Course to ground mounted solar array. Over the past six months, the CPA, Kuna Mesut Pond Association, has hosted three town hall style virtual meetings in which Evan Turner, the representative for AMP Energy, met with CPA members and our neighbors who shared. met with CPA members and our neighbors who shared their concerns and support for the pond. Based on the largely positive response and willingness of AMP Energy to adapt the project's proposal to address specific, several specific concerns of the local community, the CPA supports, including the proposed zoning law, bylaw amendments, and request to include the listed parcels in the town of Falmouth's zoning solar overlay district at the spring twenty-twenty-one town meeting warrant. Specifically, the developer has modified the proposal to ensure that existing tree line along the pond will be maintained for aesthetic and ecological impact. Commit to funding a long-term water quality monitoring and research project in the Coonamessit Pond, which could be led by the Coonamessit Pond Association and a first of its kind on Cape Cod. Propose an environmentally sensitive system of community-accessible trails. Reserve certain valued community resources such as a beloved sledding hill for public use. Provide for reforestation offsets of trees which may be cleared for solar installations, including attention paid to desired species for replanting. And eliminate the need for future herbicide use through planting of wildflower meadows at the base of the arrays. We further understand that the developer proposes to purchase the property outright, in which case the land will be donated to the town for permanent conservation at the end of the lifetime of the solar arrays. CPA was formed in nineteen eighty-five in response to our opposition to develop these parcels and others into a three hundred and thirty-six acre subdivision called the Country Club on Coonamessit. Placing renewable energy, uh, producing solar panels in the landscape while eliminating the herbicides, pesticides, and other chemicals that affect water quality would, would bring benefits to the pond as well as to the town of Falmouth. The developers have demonstrated good faith in working with the Coonamessit Pond Association and our neighbors. And the proposal has the best interests of the community, the health and the serenity of the pond and its ecological health at its root. Sincerely, Coonamessit Pond Association Board of Directors.
Okay, I have another letter here from Andrew Reed, who, um, I can read it. It, but essentially it's, he supports it, but he doesn't see why we should even regulate this, all of this to begin with. The only one of our, um, warrant articles, the warrant articles here that he supports is Article eighteen. The rest, he. Okay, he supports Article twenty-one and twenty-two, but he doesn't understand why we should be regulating anything. So I'm just paraphrasing what he wrote in.
Very well.
Do you want to read any of the others that are opposed now, or do you want to go to those who wish to do their presentation?
Well, I, I think that the folks who are ready to present, if that's fine with you.
That's fine with me.
Megan Amsler from the energy committee.
That's fine.
Uh, we'll have queued up behind her, uh, Jessica Rittenhour from the three hundred committee. And then Rosemary Carey, uh, also from the energy committee. Uh, and then, uh, take it from there.
Okay.
Right, Megan is in the room.
Good evening. Megan Amsler, Chair of the Falmouth Energy Committee. Was trying to share my screen, but I'm not sure that that is going to work.
It doesn't look like it, Megan.
I've, I've got your slides queued up if you'd like me to do.
That would be super, Tom. Thank you.
Happy to do that. Let's. Let's see how well I do. Hang on just a sec. Alright, so I think you have a lovely picture of the knob on.
Yes. Yep, this is just to show you the members of, of our committee include Alex Buckincelli, Rosemary Carey, Matt Patrick, and Eleanor Ling and myself. Next slide. Just quickly that we do support the growth of solar, uh, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and our reliance on fossil fuel, in particular um, in the town of Falmouth and throughout the entire Commonwealth. Um, we also support it to increase our resiliency. Keep going. You can go right through this. We've heard enough about this slide tonight, but that was just from a context perspective. Um, and I will say I was really happy to hear the, um, the refinement of the tree planting because that was definitely uh, one of the issues that our committee had issue with in terms of the, um, the up to twenty acres and, and hearing the, um, hearing the proponents of this project speak to the fact that for every tree cut down, there would be, um, trees replanted. That, that was really good to hear. As our committee's perspective, uh, that I'm here to present tonight, we do support the expansion of solar in Falmouth. Um, we do support the inclusion of this project into the solar overlay district. Um, and, and we are not in support of a sweeping bylaw change, um, as we perceived it in Article twenty-one, but it was very good to hear tonight some of the, um, clarification on that. Again, just to say that we, we do not, um, the way we understood it, we did not support the, the clearing of up to twenty acres, but again, hearing, hearing the mitigation strategy, that was, that was very good. Um, and from the earth-moving regulations and our reading of that, we, we really don't have an opinion. We defer to the zoning board of appeals and to con- conservation commission's, um, judgment on, on that. And hopefully we'll hear about that. Um, next slide. I think it was covered a little bit tonight in terms of trees, but we are really wanting to hear, um, you know, basically have the entire ecosystem services of this land be, um, something that continues to support wildlife and air quality, water quality, all of that stuff, which again, I, I was very heartened to hear um, those points spoken to tonight. So, um, and that was, that was good. So. Next, scroll on down. Pollinators. I was very happy to hear that. We, we are really very much in support of, um, having pollinator-friendly plantings put in conjunction with the, um, with the solar arrays. And then for any grass that does exist, we are supportive of having no mow grass because of the fact that, um, it will thrive in rocky, sandy soil and, um, and do quite well. So if you can scroll down to the next. There you can sort of see what it looks like. Um, and it doesn't need any fertilizer and it doesn't need any mowing. And we also thought that if, if it's all fenced and we can go on to the next slide, um, that sheep, you can always use sheep to keep things mowed down. Um, I was also really happy to hear about the uh, support for trails and the integration of having greater, um, trail systems interconnected with the existing trail systems around the, um, the, the pond and the conservation area. Next. Our other mitigation recommendations are, and I'm glad that, um, the chairwoman brought this up in terms of thinking about the caliber size of trees, um, we would like to see native species, uh, replanted and seeing the buffer maintained and around conservation land and the watershed. Um, we as a committee had also wanted to have the, um, exploration of the potential of canopyed arrays on the parking lot that is at the end of Theater Drive. Um, and it is just our recommendation that minimized earthmoving is done. And then, of course, the, having the tangible benefits of this solar system come back to our community, in particular in a, if there's a opportunity to do community-shared solar for a portion of the output of this array back to low to moderate income rate payers within Falmouth, that is absolutely something that we would really want to see. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Megan, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Originally, I looked at your, uh, slide presentation and I thought the energy committee is very much opposed to this because of the deforestation and a number of other things. I'm getting the impression from your comments that after tonight's description, um, by their proponents of the changes that you are more disposed towards having it happen. Is that an incorrect interpretation of your comments?
I should be very clear that I, I, just as my own individual self, listening to the, um, the proponents' description of the plantings, I, I felt, I, I obviously haven't, we haven't had a chance to get our quorum together.
I understand. I'm asking your, your impression now.
My personal opinion is that I, I am very, I, I'm happy to hear that that is, uh, you know, sort of this one-for-one trade-off. It makes me um, more supportive personally. I cannot speak from the committee's perspective as a whole.
Understood. I understand that. I was asking about you personally. Okay? Um, does anybody else, uh, yes, Bob?
Yeah, just a comment. Something that hasn't been brought up is the health of the trees in any area. Uh, if you take a walk through Beebe Woods, there is a huge percentage of trees that are dead. Dead trees don't sequester carbon, and these are older trees, and how much longer they can last? Uh, not that we should cut down trees just because, uh, they may not last another twenty years or so, but uh, you have to look at the percentage of dead trees, uh, on, uh, these parcels as well. And, uh, the benefits of, uh, the solar arrays versus, uh, the benefits of those trees.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, any other comments or add questions to Megan from the board? Okay. Thank you so much, Megan, for your presentation. Okay, who are we going to next, Tom?
Got Jessica Rittenhour.
Okay, Jessica.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, thank you all for the opportunity to speak. So I am, uh, for the record, I'm Jessica Rittenhour. I'm the Executive Director of the Three Hundred Committee Land Trust. And I'm speaking tonight, uh, to share, uh, correspondence, uh, from the Board of Directors of the Three Hundred Committee. Uh, we are speaking to Article twenty-one. I just want to be sure to clarify that our commentary is related, uh, to that one article. Uh, the Three Hundred Committee Land Trust Board of Directors met on February second, twenty-twenty-one and discussed Petition Article twenty-one submitted for the April twenty-twenty-one town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw article related to the large-scale ground-mounted solar overlay district. The Three Hundred Committee has studied the solar bylaw as approved by town meeting and has thoroughly reviewed the site plan review, design, and operation standards in Chapter two forty dash two fifty-four. The existing setback requirements, land clearing limitations, and applicable earth-moving regulations were thoughtfully crafted uh, to provide adequate buffers to solar arrays and to minimize land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts. Further, a fixed setback, uh, excuse me, a fixed setback provides uniform protection, whereas an average setback as proposed by the petitioner, smaller in some areas and larger in other areas, would provide inconsistent protection. The Three Hundred Committee urges the planning board to stand behind the setback requirements and the land and forest clearing limitations as written into the bylaw approved by town meeting. The setbacks and the two-acre maximum clearing limitation provide appropriate and necessary protections for adjacent properties and our natural resources. The Three Hundred Committee supports the planning process that the planning board conducted while crafting the existing bylaw. And we support the limitations that were put into place to ensure that solar developments in Falmouth meet the environmental protection standards approved by town meeting. The existing bylaw provides a balance between land and forest clearing to accommodate solar arrays while conserving natural resources and forests to maintain a healthy ecosystem and absorb carbon. The Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative Position Statement on Forests Versus Solar Farms provides a helpful resource with regards to the site selection considerations and citing standards for solar arrays. This document was provided as an attachment to the letter when we submitted it to the planning board. The planning board, excuse me, the Three Hundred Committee endorses the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative Guidelines with special emphasis on locating arrays in areas that have already been disturbed and avoiding undisturbed areas such as forests. The Three Hundred Committee urges the planning board to support healthy ecosystems and to balance natural resource protection while allowing for alternative energy developments under the bylaw. The proposed amendment for reduced setbacks and for clearing up to twenty percent of lot area is inappropriate and inconsistent with the environmental protection standards that town meeting has put into place. Signed Jessica Rittenhour, Executive Director, and this again is submitted on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Three Hundred Committee. So thank you for the opportunity to share this before we leave this evening.
Does any planning board member have any question that you wish to have Jessica answer? Okay. Thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you.
And now Rosemary Carey.
Yes, hello. Thank you for taking my comment. Um, I'm Rosemary Carey, member of the energy committee. Uh, but tonight I'm speaking for the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative, which is a coalition of organizations, businesses, faith groups, and citizens committed to mitigating the climate crisis on Cape Cod. So I'll be reading from a letter, um, from Richard Delaney, who's President of the Board of Directors of Cape Cod Climate Change Collective, Collaborative. He couldn't be here tonight. The Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative has been asked by Falmouth stakeholders to offer their opinion on proposed revisions to the Falmouth Town Bylaw Article twenty-one, Section two, which would allow up to twenty percent of a property to be deforested to erect a ground-mounted solar array. Where the Climate Collaborative has thoroughly researched and issued a position statement, um, on, on this issue. We hope the following comments will be helpful in the planning board's deliberative process. The Climate Collaborative's position on the installation of large-scale, commercial-grade solar arrays on forested lands may be summarized as follows. While the collaborative believes that solar arrays are a critical source of clean energy for our region, we are opposed to the deforestation of vegetated land to erect commercial-scale solar arrays. When sited in undeveloped areas, commercial-scale, ground-based solar arrays threaten the amount of forest cover on the Cape and Islands. The amount of land devoted to upland forest has been shrinking rapidly in the region for the past twenty years, during which time twenty-two thousand, three hundred acres of forest cover have been lost, leading to increased contamination of water bodies, destruction of wildlife habitat, and diminution of carbon sequestration resources that serve to mitigate climate change effects. The collaborative believes every effort should be made to cite solar installations on existing and municipally-owned planned development sites. We recommend prioritizing citing uh, large-scale solar arrays on brownfields, old industrial sites, depleted gravel pits, and paved parking lots, and avoiding undeveloped sites such as forests and open lands. Recognizing that building large solar arrays on developed sites, uh, such as solar canopies and parking lots may be more expensive than placing them on undeveloped land, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has adopted a solar financing incentive program, Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target or SMART, that increases financial incentives for rooftops, parking lots, and brownfield sites, and reduces incentives for projects on undeveloped sites. The collaborative endorses this program. Collaborative can, can, concurs with Mass Audubon Society's finding that careful site selection for renewable facilities of all types is important to minimize the loss and fragmentation of wildlife as well as forest farmland, farmlands or wetlands that sequester carbon and provide other functions and values. These lands are an important part of resilience for people and nature. Finally, the collaborative agrees with and endorses the Mass Department of Energy Resources Guidance for Local Municipal zoning bylaws for citing solar arrays. This model zoning bylaw reads in part, where a solar facility is cited as well as placement on the site once selected, is an important consideration, particularly in regard to large, large-scale, ground-mounted solar facilities. Dower strongly encourages locations that result in significant loss of land and natural resources, including farm and forest land, and encourages rooftop sighting as well as locations in industrial and commercial districts or on vacant disturbed land. Significant tree cutting is problematic because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide. We thank you for your consideration on this proposed bylaw amendment and would be happy to respond to any questions or requests for information. Sincerely, Richard F. Delaney, President, Board of Directors, Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have a question of Rosemary? Okay, thank you very much, Rosemary. Okay, thank you very much, Rosemary. We have a number more letters. I have one from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It was written by Noreen Stockman on behalf of the seven members. At its meeting of February 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted to send this letter expressing our opposition to the proposed petitioner-initiated changes in Article, I'm getting tired, 48, Section 240-251 through 240-255, that would dramatically increase the amount of land clearing that could occur on parcels designated for placement of ground-mounted solar arrays. Such changes would have broad townwide impacts. While the board fully supports measures to encourage renewable energy production within the town of Falmouth, we also recognize and wish to emphasize the critical importance of appropriate citing for any such projects, especially large utility-scale projects. We believe the town of Falmouth has many appropriate sites for placement of large-scale, ground-mounted solar arrays, and has already exploited some of these, for instance, the municipal landfill. It is not necessary or advisable to encourage development of such arrays in unsuitable sites, which we believe the proposed changes would do. It is worth pointing out that the Cape Cod Commission has developed a planning tool for identifying appropriate sites for placement of large-scale solar arrays, and then there's a site you could look up. Therefore, the zoning board opposes the proposed modifications to the existing regulations establishing criteria for large-scale, ground-mounted solar overlay district. This bylaw was just recently approved at Town Meeting, February 21, 2019, and the board believes that it was carefully crafted to include appropriate buffers and limits to clearing of vegetation designed to protect the butters and the town's natural resources. In particular, the board supports the current dimensional requirement stipulating adequate buffers, Section 240-254B, and the limits on land clearing, Section 240-254D, that ensure that no more than two acres can be deforested for any single project in the name of renewable energy production. And above that is the name of the seven zoning board of appeals members. Have one here from Bob Gould. It was emailed in to members of the planning board. Because of the perils of the climate crisis, I organized a local grassroots organization in Falmouth, FALCAN, Falmouth Climate Action Network, modeled at the time after a stronger and more well-established organization on Martha's Vineyard. Although we certainly need to generate many approaches to reduce fossil fuel consumption as quickly as possible, and solar power is an important player, knowledge of the way the plan to turn the Cape Cod Country Club into a large solar farm, though laudable, raises many concerns, some of which David Mark Welch and I addressed in a letter to the editor that was published in the current Falmouth Enterprise. A link to the article is included below. We believe that the strategy for undertaking such a massive project needs to be investigated by a broader team, a team that takes into account the most effective way to integrate a solar farm into available land without damaging the ecosystem. Additionally, this project should be integrated into a broader and comprehensive study on how to integrate available land to meet the needs of our community, the wildlife we support, and a clear path forward that is planned in a far more comprehensive way. And this is Bob Gould, Cypress Hill Road, Falmouth. And I want to note here for anybody listening that all the planning board members have copies of all of these letters, in case you're wondering. I'm not just reading these. The board has it for their deliberations. This one comes from, excuse me, William Connell. It was again emailed. Myself and many Falmouth residents are vehemently opposed to the rezoning of the Cape Cod Country Club property to allow a solar array. Cape Cod Country Club should remain it as a golf course. It is a major asset to the town and region. Either the town should purchase it, or the owner should request offers for private investors to buy the property and keep it operating as a golf course. It must remain zoned for recreational use. The need for clean energy is important, but placing it on one of Falmouth's most precious existing recreational areas will do more harm than good. Falmouth has other options for solar that don't negatively impact the quality of life in town. The golf course employs numerous people and attracts visitors to the town. Golfers come from all over the region to play and spend their money at local restaurants, hotels, shops, and other businesses. To highlight its value, we need only look to this past 2020 golf season during the pandemic. Golf was one of the few activities that was safe for people to enjoy, other than going to the beach or bike path. I don't have the statistics, but according to my conversations with the golf staff, the number of golf rounds played at the course were substantially higher than in previous years. This is despite a shorter season due to the shutdown of Massachusetts golf courses early in the season. If the golf course is eliminated, it will take away a vital recreational outlet for not only Falmouth residents, but the greater Cape Cod community. We need more recreational outlets now, not less. The summer of 2020 and the hot real estate market show that Falmouth will be more populated than ever going forward due to the popularity of remote work. We need to think about that and its impact to the town and the needs of its residents and visitors. Yes, there are other public golf courses in Falmouth, but with one less, fewer will be able to enjoy one of Falmouth's greatest outdoor recreational options. And this one is from Catherine. I do not know how her last name is pronounced. It's C-E-T-T-A. I'm going to say Setta. I am writing in regard to Articles 21 and 22 proposed for the Spring Town Meeting. I am a resident of Hatchville since 1983 and have been aware of the proposal for the solar installation since this past summer. I attended a virtual meeting with a developer hosted by the Coonamessit Pond Association, and I am aware that the CPA is supporting the changes. I do not believe that they fully represent the neighbors and residents of Falmouth. In my experience in speaking with others about the development, most people were not aware of it. I do not support the zoning changes. I am not entirely opposed to a solar panel installation, but I am opposed to changing the zoning to allow an industrial-scale installation in a residential neighborhood. The zoning bylaws in place were developed with good reasoning and to direct solar installations to land already distributed by earth-moving and clearing activity. Clearcutting and earth leveling will have both ecological and visual impacts that, in my opinion, and also with some scientific basis, see, for example, the letter in last Friday's enterprise, are not counterbalanced by the production of energy. The zoning changes would also put other areas in Falmouth at risk for this type of disruption for solar installation. Many Falmouth residents will be sad to see the Cape Cod Country Club cease to function as a golf course and winter sledding paradise. I realize that this is a reality, but I believe we should proceed with caution when a developer wants to change our well-thought-out zoning regulations to turn maximum profit by using every last acre without concern for the cost to the local ecology and neighborhood. Falmouth needs housing more than solar power, and though 100 to 150 new houses would have impacts as well, they would at least be consistent with the neighborhood. Thank you for providing this opportunity for input. And this one comes from Nicholas Lowell. I am writing to state my opposition to the proposal to amend zoning bylaw Article 48, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Overlay District for the April 28-21 Town Meeting, Article 21. The proposed changes are in conflict with the stated purpose of the district, which includes, in quotes, "minimize the impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources," close quotes. Section 240-251 purpose. Specifically, I object to: One, reducing required lot setbacks along streets and permanently conserved open spaces. Setback should be required and should be uniform in application so as to provide consistency and predictability from project to project. In addition, setbacks where property and butts' open space are essential to preserve the value of that space as a scenic and natural resource. Two, increasing the amount of deforestation to 20%. As a town, we do not want to encourage clearing forested land for solar farms. To do so would run counter to best practices for citing solar farms as recognized by groups such as the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative that have studied the pros and cons of clearing land for solar projects. Three, removing the application, excuse me, of Article 29, Earth-Moving Regulations to solar installations. Falmouth's Earth-Moving Regulation should not be waived for solar projects. Removing these regulations would allow for unrestricted regrading and/or earth removal that would negatively impact the scenic, natural, and historic resources of sites and would make restoration of sites after decommissioning virtually impossible. As a Town Meeting member in 2018, I supported the creation of the Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Overlay District, and I continue to support it today. But should the proposed amendments be adopted, I would be hesitant to support future expansion of the overlay district for fear that the resulting projects would not be in the town's long-term best interest. And Tom, I'm losing my voice now. But we've got many more, and I don't know whether you want to continue reading, or you want to summarize, or how you want to handle it.
Well, we have a couple requests in the chat, one from Kevin Van Cleef to speak to the golf aspect of the development.
Right.
If we could elevate Kevin Van Cleef. There, we got a couple of Van Cleef's on the.
I believe he wrote a letter in, too.
He did. So while we are up, here's Kevin in the room.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thanks for taking some time.
For joining us.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys giving us some time to speak. And I know it's getting late in the night, so I won't try to take up too much time. The letter I put in really highlights a lot of things that we love about Cape Cod Country Club, and I'll just breeze through this here, highlighting everything that we noted in the letter. So we're writing on behalf of the thousands of public golfers throughout Falmouth, Cape Cod, Massachusetts, and New England. As industries and economies across the world continue to feel the effects of global pandemic, golf has taken off, providing a safe, fun, and accessible recreation option for all ages. Public golf has now come under threat on Cape Cod and beyond. I've got a couple of numbers here that can support some of the statistics that a few people referencing before Paul. I'm sorry, I know that we're droning on, just like the solar people, but we'll get through this as quickly as we can. According to Golf Data Tech's 2020 National Golf Performance Report, golfers played 13.9% more rounds in 2020 than 2019. And the number of rounds played in October and November of 2020 increased more than 50% versus the same months in 2019. While the global pandemic wreaks havoc on many segments of our economy, the golf industry experienced a significant boost in rounds played. There's a lot of people that travel down to Cape Cod Country Club throughout the entire year to play the golf course, especially in the offseason. Being that the Cape is in a very, a microclimate kind of an environment, the opportunities for year-round golf is there, and so that means that many less people are going to be coming to Falmouth in the offseason. Like I mentioned before, golf has provided a much-needed opportunity to get outside, increase exercise, and safely socialize as a distance. Golf has fared better than most US industries during the pandemic, and as on and off-course facilities effectively adapted their operations to accommodate customers while adhering to CDC, local, and National Health Department guidelines. It's very safe activity that people can enjoy now in the pandemic and beyond. Crucially, the golf boom was bolstered by folks picking up the game for the first time or returning after a national hiatus. I don't need to get into the numbers of how many golfers return to the game or how many golfers play, but if we don't have these public places to foster the game, then we would be losing all of these opportunities to get people out and in nature, enjoying nature and enjoying these classic golf courses. Just a little bit about the course itself. In 1928, the Coonamessit Country Club opened. We're almost 100 years old with this golf course. It's been there for almost 100 years. If a public building or any sort of historic site that has been there for 100 years was trying to be bulldozed, just so the owners could take the money back in New Hampshire, they don't even live in Massachusetts, people would be outraged. And I think that it's really frustrating that, you know, Jim, I've seen in your office, you have plenty of art on your walls behind there. This landscape is a beautiful piece of art. It's been fostered and taken care of for the last almost 100 years. It truly is a shame that it would go away just with the snap of fingers and, you know, just so someone could deposit a check. Either way, we don't need to get into the architecture of the course, and the people are designed at those merits. You guys can get into on your own. It's getting a little bit late. But what I do want to highlight is the superintendent and the staff at the golf course, and while they do work with a limited budget, and they don't have all of the resources to provide the facilities that people have, a private golf course, the superintendent, Matthew Crowther, was actually just recognized with the President's Award from the Golf Course Superintendent Association of America, which is highlighting his low water usage and his conscientiousness towards fertility in making sure that he is conscious to putting very few inputs into the environment. He's a very, very safe guy, and he's all about making the courses naturally, work naturally with the environment. So again, he's been recognized nationally for his awareness and changing the narrative of golf maintenance. It's a very exciting thing. Golfers obviously use the course primarily during the golf season, but, you know, this winter with all the snow, we've had plenty of people out there snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, et cetera. And it's really a shame that the Freel family, although they've fostered the game for decades, that they're really giving up on this course. They have deep roots in New England golf, and they should definitely be highlighting, but highlighted, but all of the selling, selling the golf course and getting rid of another public asset really cuts against everything that they've done for the game and for the community. It's one less course that we have in Falmouth, the one less recreational aspect that we have for people to come and enjoy. And it's very frustrating that, once it's gone, it would be gone forever. So I urge the town of Falmouth to, you know, really look into this and realize what they're getting rid of, because it is a very special place and one that a lot of people really care for. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate everyone giving a little bit of thought.
Thank you for your comments. Tom?
Alrighty, so I have a letter from Joseph A. Soares. Subject: Amend zoning bylaw. My name is Joseph Soares. My wife Patricia and I are owners of the property located at 77 Boxberry Hill Road. We purchased this property in 1978. I have read the proposed changes to the subject bylaw and am opposed to all the proposed changes. To setbacks, allow 20% of the lot to be deforested and allow earth-moving regulations to be not applicable, provides the solar development exactly what they're looking for, ability to maximize the number of solar panels on a parcel so they can maximize their profit. As my understanding, the zoning bylaw which currently exists was approved by Town Meeting a couple of years ago, 2018, I think. I'm sure the bylaw underwent vigorous review and discussions that went forth, put forth to Town before, to vote at Town Meeting. Since the Falmouth approved the bylaw on Town Meeting, I don't see any reason to make any changes to it, especially for a commercial project of this type and size. Now that I have made my opposition known to the proposed changes, I'd like to step back and take a look at the bigger picture. Solar projects are fine, but they should be cited on land that is already of marginal use, such as landfills and other marginally-used properties, such as side of I-495 near the Framingham exit. It should not be located on prime open space, which is a higher value to be retained as open space. Town of Falmouth has always been committed to maintaining and increasing open space, and we, as proprietors in Falmouth, pay part of the real estate taxes, support the goal of land conservation. Town of Falmouth should be the first to object to this highly-valued open space being used for a large commercial solar project. The acreage is being considered for this large commercial project, maybe the last premium open space in East Falmouth, would be kept as open, it should be kept as open space, would fit nicely with the conservation land that already exists around Cape Cod Country Club and also the open land across Route 151 where the Francis Crane Preserve is located. The town should seriously consider partnering with others and purchasing this open space, keeping it natural for richer generations to enjoy, as the town did with the recent successful open space development at the Boggs, at the John Parker Road area. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments regarding this matter. I would like my comments read and be put in the public record at this meeting. We have, and I'm taking them chronologically. I think Jim has a question. Madam Chair?
Jim, take yourself off mute, please. Can't hear you, Jim. You're off mute, but we can't hear you.
I don't understand.
What?
Can anyone else hear me?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. Are we going to read all these letters? This is getting very late.
Tom, you're on mute.
There are four more.
Can we summarize, do you think? Just recognize who wrote it and summarize them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alrighty. Next, we have from Mark Cool. A series of questions the planner or the article provider might answer. Purpose of the overlay district, isn't the proposed area considered in our community as an area of scenic and natural resources? If the overlay district expansion should incorporate proposed area and by right zoning would govern, would objections to issues of scenic and natural resources have less legal bearing by the site plan review? Does the proposed overlay district satisfy the planning board's intent on large lots previously disturbed? Will the overlay district extension impose the provisions of the maximum two acres of tree clearing? Is closing a repurposed golf course for renewable energy, in this case, a make, might be a worthy project, or expansion in the overlay district? Yet the balance of other community assets cannot be overlooked. I urge the planning board to recommend indefinite postponement, scenic and natural qualities of the area and other public concerns. We cannot afford overbalancing the commercial utility with other uses. And then we have from Barbara Snyder, who forwarded a letter from Brian Gray. I am against the proposed project because it changes the character of Falmouth. I am against the proposed project because it changes the character of Falmouth. It is an inefficient use of land resources. Energy consumption, regional or even national, and the energy proposed goes into the grid and sold. New and Cape Cod are not an efficient place to place them. The town passes so rarely district. This is a consistent refrain from several people. The bylaw is not that old. Let's let it work on it. And final thought taxes, the land is on agricultural with favorable tax treatment. It goes to a business owner soberly. What's the tax base? What are the past savings due? And what are those financial implications of those sort of things? From Brian. And then from Louis R. Stern, forty nine Loop Road, Falmouth, Massachusetts. I write as a resident of Falmouth, the Director of the Green Sanctuary Program of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Falmouth and a member of the Leadership Council of the Faith Communities Environmental Network and affiliate of the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative. I strongly oppose the proposed revisions of Article twenty one. We cannot afford to cut off our noses in spite of our face to cut down trees in spite of our land and our cherished ecosystems. Business profits cannot come before eco justice. Builder cannot make enough money on a solar farm without cutting in acres of trees. We rely on sequester carbon and maintain sensitive balance of our ecosystem and slow down the destruction of climate. They should be required to find another location, purpose for the property. And then we have finally last one from Susan Starkey. Opposing Article twenty one. You must holistically and only plan for solar rays on already disturbed land or bury it rooftops, parking structures. If there are compelling reasons to move forward this installation, make an exception, not a new rule. There's much in this article that following in the following that opens the door for the planning board to store more land rather than protected. Planning boards up to start trust for the agents acting on behalf of the town in the Cape Cod Times article alone. I'm not quite sure what that means. Opposing Article twenty two says Mr. Starkey. We do not rezone this land for its agricultural use unless the projects are reconfigured to save the twenty acres of trees. The developer, it can still be designed to serve the needs of Falmouth and the developer as long as it doesn't harm the long term interest of the town. We have to do our best approach possible to achieve net zero, saving the land's ability to sequester carbon along with preserving natural habitats. And since several references to some studies that have been produced.
We have another one for Javier Thayer too that came in today. He's writing in opposition to Article twenty one. He's an advocate of clean and renewable energy, but he's concerned about this. He says that this has an impact on all large scale ground mounted solar projects and may and may result in unintended consequences. The, if they start removing more an additional twenty acres of trees, it would release a large quantity of previously stored carbon and significantly reduce the future carbon sequestration capacity in the area as well as major disruption of wildlife habitats. And lastly, the exemption of earth moving regulations in this large lot would release and would result in the release of a significant amount of carbon to the air as well as potential soil erosion. So he's urging the planning board to not support it. Okay, and Tom, is there anything else in all the comments that we should be knowing about?
Yeah, there is one other letter from Geraldine Shad, a member of the Falmouth Climate Action Network, also in opposition to Article twenty one and points out many of the topics that other folks have as well.
Okay. I think we've named everybody. There were a lot of chats coming in. Was there anything there that we should? I'll get you, Bob, just.
Yeah, an awful lot of discussion about some, some, some questions and sort of discussions about tree storage, carbon and how golf is important.
Okay. And Bob?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it is known that we have read every letter that is in opposition. Because I don't appreciate snarky little comments like we just received.
Okay, I didn't see what that snarky little comment was.
I saw it and I don't appreciate that. It's one thing to make a statement, but you don't need the snarky little comment at the end.
No, and I pointed out also that we each and every one of us have a copy of every one of these letters too. So now Bob Amant suggested that we not close the hearing on these two articles tonight, but that we leave it open for additional written comments. What does the board want to do on this? I think we've gotten a tremendous number, but he believes that there will be a lot more positive comments coming in. Charlotte?
I'd just as soon leave it open. People feel strongly about it one way or another. And I also think there's a possibility that some of these people heard information that they didn't have before. So that we might see some change one way or another. Might be better to keep it open.
I'm fine with that. Somebody just chatted that her letter was not read and I know I have it. So I don't know what happened to it in my stack of communications. I just wanted to assure her that it's here.
Yeah. Betty Leah?
Right.
Eddie, he cocks Leah.
Correct.
I asked the planning board to undertake a study as soon as possible to determine how decisions affect the climate. Ask the board to determine if they would need to recognize climate impacts as a local concern and mitigation as a local need. Thereby making climate impacts a prominent part of the decision making. Recognizing climate emergency potentially gives Falmouth control to manage what we can in response to the emergency. This should give the board power to use climate mitigation proactively in their work.
Okay, so we will not close it. We will leave it open to additional written comments as we've been known to do. And as you all know, we are not going to make any decisions. This will come up at our next meeting, which is March ninth, where we discuss it and make a referral to the warrant. Okay. Charlotte?
God, considering how late it is, as long as we're keeping it open, should we move the consideration of the other articles to that continued hearing?
I don't know if we can do that because it was advertised tonight. We'd have to readvertise, so I don't think we can.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that.
So we can move on to those Article eighteen to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw Article thirty nine, site plan review by replacing section two forty dash one ninety two applicability. So that the revised section will read. Any new development, redevelopment or expansion in use other than one single family or one, two family residence on a lot, which would add five hundred square feet or more of gross floor area or roof area, or which would, under the parking schedule table of minimum requirements of section two forty dash one oh eight, require a total of two or more parking spaces based on the existing redevelopment and or new development, or require a change to the layout or location of two or more parking spaces, an increase in pavement of more than three hundred square feet or the alteration of any driveway or any change of which would of use which would, under the parking schedule, table of minimum requirements of section two forty dash one oh eight, require two or more parking spaces based on only only on new development, grading or clearing more than ten percent of a lot, except for landscaping on a lot with an existing structure or a proposed single or two family dwelling clearing necessary for percolation and other site tests work incidental to agricultural activity, work in conjunction with an approved subdivision plan and accessory apartment allowed as a matter of right or special permit shall be permitted only upon the approval of the planning board, precise plan review. A administrative approval for minor alteration to building exterior or site. Town planner may authorize work to proceed with outside plan review for minor alterations provided the following criteria are satisfied. One, the proposed alteration shall not violate any provision of this bylaw. Two, the proposed alteration does not result in an expansion of the building footprint other than those required by the building code related to means of egress or accessibility. Three, the proposed alteration does not change the height or roof lines of any building. Four, the proposal does not result in any substantial change in lot coverage. B, waived requirements, the board may waive by an affirmative majority vote, any of the following requirements if it believes that the strict compliance with these rules and regulations will because of the size or special nature of the proposed development, create an undue hardship on the applicant and not be in the public interest. Any waiver or in perens, as pluralizing it, requested by the applicant shall be submitted in writing by the applicant with the submission of the site plan review application. Or do or take any other action on this matter on behalf of the planning board. As you know, this is our article that we put in. We have considerably detailed comments by Laura Moynihan. I am not aware of comments from anybody else on Article eighteen. Tom, have we gotten any further comments?
You had mentioned one of the earlier writers who had made comments on several articles, but other than that, the.
He said he accepts, he's, he's all right with Article eighteen, period. That's it.
Excellent. So, so as you may have seen or may not have seen while you were reading, I shared the screen with the bold and strike through version. So the two slides that I had put up, these are what the bylaw looks like when it's amended with the blue bold is additions and the red deletions that came out. And essentially, as we had talked about before, why, and I think you've got the why Article eighteen slide up. Why, why are we looking at changing this? The threshold for the current bylaw requires the planning board to review any new development or expansion was adds a thousand square feet or more. And it provides the applicant with the board's flexibility for potential administrative approvals. This issue came to light when the gas station at four thirty five Palmer Avenue was demolished and the site redeveloped with no review by the planning board regarding driveways, drainage or design because the new gas station and market didn't increase by a thousand square feet or more. And it wasn't considered a new development or expansion. So that is the reason, the reason why we're having this discussion and why we proposed this for a town meeting.
And as I said, Laura, Laura, Laura Moynihan, excuse me, I'm very tired. Laura Moynihan's comments are quite extensive and probably some of them we should seriously take into account. And I, so I would recommend that you all take your time in considering her comments so that when we discuss this on the ninth, we can see what we want to do.
Did we get?
You didn't?
No, I don't. I don't think I did. I don't have them.
Weren't they forwarded on to everybody, Tom?
I am fairly certain that Melinda likely forwarded them on. We had a couple of different versions. So I can hit the, the six bullet points of Laura's letter.
No need, just send them to me, please.
Yeah.
I would like to read them.
Has everybody else seen her comments? Okay, Pam says, no, she hasn't. Bob, you have. Paul, yes, you have. Oh, no, you have not.
We can all read, just send them to us.
Yeah, just send them to everybody again, okay?
Alrighty, and as we discussed, the hearing will be open on March ninth as well.
Because we're not closing the hearings.
Right.
Okay, Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to recommend the zoning by law Article thirty nine, site plan review by amending section two forty dash one ninety eight. Lapse of decision to extend the period by one year by replacing the words two years with three years to read. The site plan review decision issued under this article shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced except for good cause. A determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board or do or take any other action on this matter on behalf of the planning board. Have there been any comments on this, Tom?
There have none.
Okay, so we're continuing this one until the ninth. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map to remove text box of footnotes one through eight and add reference to all existing zoning overlay districts, including accident prevention, wildlife corridor and large scale ground mounted solar to remove inconsistencies with both the online zoning map and the hard copies available for purchase through the town clerk's office. No properties will be rezoned as a product of the proposed map amendments. And this is on request of the planning board.
So I have the screen share up and I'm just going to show, I believe you've got two versions of this Falmouth zoning map.
Yes.
So on the left is the one that is the online version on the right is the one that you can purchase from the town clerk's office. And this is something that came out of our zoning recodification review. Bob and Bob pointed out some inconsistencies with the map. They also pointed out it was not part of their scope, but they thought since they're in the midst of this, we should look at those. So the things that we were discussing taking out with these two to make some consistency between the two is essentially some of these large text boxes at the bottom. This footnotes are part of the zoning. It's not something you would typically see on a zoning map. Usually what you see on a zoning map is the legend that shows the zoning districts, single A, A, B, C, public use agriculture down on the left. And the idea is to add some of the overlays that weren't included in the map, as you see down here in the legend at the bottom, not all the overlays are in there. And get rid of some of this white space on the map and have more room and more clarity on the map for the, the actual zoning map. I am working with Bob Shay to get a mark, a mockup of the new zoning map, what it would look like. It will be sharing with the board at the next bylaw. But any change to the zoning map, even what I would consider a housekeeping method of removing some of these extraneous text and things like that is a change of the zoning map. It does require a vote at town meeting.
Okay, so planning board discussion, a recap of the planning board slash select board joint meeting. The Falmouth Enterprise, a fabulous write up of it. I think it was extremely accurate and quite detailed. And I applaud them for the job they did on that. I don't know about the rest of you, but I thought it was a great meeting. And I thought the decision to set up a working group that's never existed in the twenty years that I've been on the board, a working group of the selectmen and the planning board specifically to further goals of the town. Those are my comments. Does anybody else wish to make comments? You all just, yes, Charlotte?
Well, I agree with you, Pat. Of course, it was a really good meeting. It was very productive. And I just want to say that as far as the, the working group, it's a great idea to have that. But it was also suggested there that we include a developer. It doesn't have, the board members have to be limited, but we can have other people part of it so that we get more input.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that, that Megan said that she and I would be working with the staff to set up a whole definition of, of the committee, its membership and its goals and missions and everything else. I threw a few things out right after that, some ideas that just floated through my head in, in no real form. But at this point, we were looking towards planning board member appointment to Davis Strait reset working group and considering that it is not quite solidified yet as to membership and what's going to happen and what the time commitment would be, I think, because I think it could be a very substantial time commitment. We probably should wait until hopefully we'll have some further definition by our March ninth meeting that we can more securely set up what we want to do at our role. Because I'd be loath to say, okay, well, it's just going to be easy because the staff is going to do all the work and we'll just be there to check off the boxes. I don't think it's going to be like that. I think it's going to be more like the local comprehensive plan in the effort that's involved in it. And Bob and Jim and I both know what that's like. It's a lot of work. So if you don't mind, I think we'll just shunt that off until the ninth. We all okay with that? Okay. Please don't say anybody has a committee report tonight. There are no announcements that I know of. Tom, do you have any announcements to make?
No, ma'am.
Okay, there is no general correspondence. Future agenda items, we've already spoken of a few and I have not a real good idea, except on the ninth, we're going to be having a huge discussion on these articles and hopefully making referrals to the town meeting warrant. When are they due, Tom?
The published articles with recommendations are out March twenty sixth, selectman vote recommendations on March eighth. So in spite of the fact that. Selectment vote recommendations on March eighth. So in spite of the fact that we got a bit of a late start because of a, a bobble by the local paper advertising things, we're in good shape to wrap up business by March ninth.
Okay, so we're in good shape on that. We'll get that done on the ninth and I don't know what else we might have. Bob?
I missed an announcement. I'd like to announce that I am running for reelection on the planning board.
Excellent.
Taking out papers. That might be a little difficult in this day of COVID though, getting people to sign a sheet of paper, so.
Charlotte?
Thank you, Bob, for prompting that. I too am running for reelection and slightly challenged by this thing. You have to give fifty signatures from unvaccinated people. I will see how that goes, but I'm definitely running and interested in continuing with this work.
I wish we could get endorsements through an email. You know, if someone sent you an email endorsing you, that we could collect them and turn them in, but
Visiting hours, people could drop by to sign.
Yeah.
You know, that's an idea. Just leave something out on a clipboard and they use their own pen. Jim?
I had to run last year under this thing and what I did, as I did, I, I took the, and the town clerk allowed it, took the, whatever we call it, the forms and sent it out to different groups, got their signatures and they emailed it back in. I did not have to meet with anybody and I got plenty of signatures. So there is a way to do it.
Okay.
Talked to the town clerk. They allowed me to do it last year.
Okay.
And I had to mail them out, get them signed and email them back again, but it all worked.
Wonderful.
Okay, now I, I don't have the time on the bottom of my screen, but it looks like it's about nine twenty-one. May I adjourn?
Yes.
We are adjourned.